Okay, good evening. This is the Huntley District 158 special meeting on October the 15th. It is 6:04. Can we have roll call?
Mr. Garen?
Here.
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Mr. Craddy?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Okay, we are all here. Mr. Garen is remote. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I'll lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we are on the public comments. We have two in-person public comments and we have many that have emailed in. So we will start with the in-person. Appreciate the couple that made it in to make their public comments. And we'll start out with Carrie Schumacher. And I'll remind you, three minutes from when you start talking, I'll try not to hard cut you, just give you a warning.
Thank you. I come before you for the second time in as many months as a former educator and a District 158 parent and a fourth student, one who has special needs. Because of my former profession as a teacher and union member and as someone married to a school administrator, I have unique appreciation for the challenges you're facing. Let me be clear, I am for teachers. This year like no other, we see our kids' teachers rising to meet the challenges of remote learning with persistent grit, admirable perseverance, and unmatched levels of positivity and passion. We know that has not come without a cost to them personally, and they are nothing short of heroes to us. Which is why it's been so disheartening to see the HDA utilize fear-mongering entitlement theatrics to drive an agenda that is so at odds with the dedication and passion demonstrated by so many of the teachers we know and love. In what was a blatantly coordinated effort, I listened to the barrage of public comments from HDA members last week because they decried the expectation that they should show up to the school building to teach no more than half their students in person. Many argue that parents and students have the choice to decide whether or not they come to school, and that teachers should have that choice as well. Well, one very significant thing distinguishes our students from our teachers. Our teachers get paid to show up. They accuse this administration and the Board of Education as being uncaring and deliberately putting the staff in harm's way when in reality the district has spent painstaking months and countless dollars to consider all stakeholders and ensures that as many necessary safety protocols are in place. And in a time where -- sorry. And in a time where many families in our district have experienced job loss and economic instability, HTH members enjoy strong health insurance benefits and better job security than nearly any other profession in our current economy. Thanks to the provisions made available through the FFCRA, in addition to the FMLA benefits mentioned last week, educators are eligible to receive up to 80 hours of pay at two-thirds of their regular rate, maxing out at $200 a day for anyone with health and family concerns or childcare issues. Unlike what the HDA would have you believe, those of us who are advocating for our kids to have the opportunity to be in school aren't doing so blindly, and we're not doing it because we expect teachers to be our free childcare. It will be with a lot of courage and no small amount of prayer that I put my kids on a bus next week, but I'm willing to lean into my own anxiety and discomfort to do as such for their academic, social, and emotional well-being. And I don't know any parents or students who are expecting schools to look today the way it did in March. Masks, hand washing, and social distancing has been our norm for months. It's not best pedagogy or hands-on lab experiences or group work that our kids need the most. My five-year-old has been counting down the days to meeting his real teacher in his real school because at the end of the day, it's about their relationship and the opportunity to make a difference in this world. HDA, our kids need you. Not you at your lesson plan best, just present in real life, smiling from your eyes behind your mask, showing up to say that you see our kids and that you're willing to do brave things right alongside of them even though you're scared and even though the world is uncertain because they're worth it and they're the reason most of you got into this profession in the first place. So Dr. Rowe, Mr. Amy, and board members, I appeal to you. Do not let the politics or the optics distress you from where you were called.
Carrie, can you interrupt that?
Unless it's in case to do. Think of the kids. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next public comment is from Sandra Batucci. Thank you for coming, Sandra.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandra Batucci, and I am a member of the community, teacher at Heinemann, and vice president of the HDA. And tonight I wanted to speak with you regarding all of these positions. First, as a union leader, I feel it is necessary. The Board of Education, District Cabinet, and community know that our teachers are still very much concerned about the plan Dr. Rowe is going to present tonight. On our last survey, over 60% of the teachers in grade six to 12 do not support the return to in-person learning plan as is. While the union very much appreciates the district changing their stance in working with those teachers with medical concerns, as well as substantially lowering the number of students in the building on a daily basis, we cannot ignore there is still a lurking sense of danger in regards to teacher safety. I do not believe the ticking time bomb feeling can be attributed solely to the district because there are protocols and measures being put in place that comes in part from what we are seeing within the community where large groups of students have been seen gathering recently. At the last board meeting, it was said that everyone needs to do their part in making back-to-school a reality by social distancing, wearing masks, working together, and by following the CDC guidelines to reduce the spread as much as possible. As a parent of students in the district, I get it. Remote learning is frustrating. I have five-year-old twins that just started kindergarten at Leguise. You do not have to tell me that remote learning kindergarten is not ideal. It is not. Even though their teacher is absolutely amazing and working twice as hard as before, it is never going to be an ideal situation because teachers are limited in some of the largest ways that makes us effective educators. For years, we have designed our classrooms and implemented strategies to make students thrive. Teaching is a passion that makes us evaluate our practices for improvement, and now the things we know work will not be allowed within our classroom walls. Flexible seating will be gone. Small group circle time, gone. Groups of students collaborating at a single table, gone. Project-based learning with shared supplies, gone. Even our treasured individual conversations where we truly connect with students and have a totally different feel now that we have to be six feet apart. In addition, this plan asks secondary teachers to teach both remotely and in-person at the same time, which is the workload of two people, and right now we have no effective strategies to implement this. Instead, what will be happening is the students will walk into their classrooms with the desks all facing the same direction, log into their Chromebooks onto Zoom, and receive a lesson online, just like the students at home. At the end of the lesson, there will be time for more individualized interaction, but again, it'll be at a distance. Students will not be assigned lockers or be able to congregate with their friends in the hallways, and at lunch, they will have pre-made meals to grab and to take to their assigned desk because all the lunch tables have been removed. When students return, they will in no way, shape, or form be returning to school they knew before the pandemic, and we are concerned they might not be adequately prepared for the differences. I think we can all agree, there is no winning to the situation. There is no magic fix that will make everything go back to normal. In Dr. Rowe -- in our several meetings, Dr. Rowe had used the phrase "failing forward" to describe what needs to be done. I personally do not disagree, but when students return to the buildings, our teachers will need grace and leeway to fail forward from both the district and the community. We are not online teachers. We are not currently trained for any of this, and we are trying to navigate uncharted waters the best way we can. We need time to try out new things and develop best practices because we have no idea how managing in-person and remote at the same time will work cohesively. I urge the district to continue to work and collaborate with our teachers to help us find solutions because in the end, we are all truly here for the students in what right now feels like an impossible situation.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming. Okay. Onto the emailed public comments.
Okay, our first comment is from Cristiana Gorman. Hello, I am emailing you tonight to voice my concern and support for you, your teachers, and support staff. As a recently new and hopefully long-term resident of Huntley, I fully back remote learning until the coronavirus is under control. There is no excuse for putting lives at risk. Although my two boys are not yet school age, I look forward to the day that they are students of a district that recognizes the value and importance of our educators.
Next comment is from Ashton Jornby Belling from Heinemann Middle School. I'm in eighth grade, and I've had to do e-learning this whole first quarter. To some things, remote learning has been awful for me. The first quarter has been the first time in my life that I've felt genuinely depressed. I've seen my friends maybe twice this school year. Typically, we see our friends every day when we go to school. Seeing them only a handful of times compared to us seeing them every day for three months is a huge difference. It's almost like getting your favorite toy taken away from you. You use it every day, and then for a whole three months, you get to only use it a few times. But in this situation, we're not talking about toys. We're talking about the people who motivate and support you on a daily basis. Without those people, our lives often become sad and unmotivated, which is a terrible thing. With remote learning being a thing, this feeling is present seven days a week, and all we've had to interact with our friends is the phone. I'm sure everyone can admit that your actions in real life are much more impactful than your actions on social media. This is only part of the issue. The communication from teacher to student has also been terrible. I've heard stories from my friends saying they've had to wait nearly two weeks for an email back from their teacher. Sure, you could say they've had a lot of emails to answer, but that shouldn't be an excuse. Email is the most reliable source of communications that we as students use, and it's often the only source we use to communicate with our teachers for some of us. Having to wait two weeks for help on an assignment is not okay. By then, we'd have an F in the gradebook. Sure, you can say that teachers have one-on-one sessions with you in breakout rooms. That's not reliable either. On a summit of essays, I had to wait at least 10 minutes of class for the teacher to come into my breakout room and help me with the essay. At that point, I had absolutely no help. I had tons of questions to ask, but I had only time to ask one. I ended up getting a C on the essay, even fixing the comment she did leave on my essay. Don't even get me started on technical issues. I've missed countless important Zoom calls due to bugs on Zoom. I've gotten -- Zoom refused to connect us maybe 30 times a quarter. This is a huge issue. I've missed tons of class time due to this, and I've even missed an entire class due to Zoom not connecting. Oh, and reverting back to the essay I mentioned previously, on the Google Doc that I used to write the essay, I had a few major corrections before turning it in. And then, what do you know, on the website I found the essay into, the changes didn't save whatsoever. All of these problems combined together have made this the worst quarter of school I've ever experienced in my life. I felt overwhelmed every single day of the school year so far. I've felt sudden glimpses of happiness occasionally, but otherwise it's been pretty dark. After 2019 being one of the best school years of my life, I really was hoping to continue that, but due to remote learning, that's not going to happen unless something changes. I felt absolutely no motivation to do any of my schoolwork, and therefore I've had countless missing assignments. After eight hours of sitting on a computer screen, listening to my teachers talk, and doing a few worksheets here or there, I don't want to do school anymore. At that point, I'm done. I've completely relieved my homework in the dust. This leaves me with tons of missing assignments. The difference between remote learning and typical in-person schooling is that remote learning is just listening to a teacher talk. During remote learning, the teachers don't teach us how to do things. They tell us how to do things, and then they figure -- let us figure out the rest for ourselves.
Thank you.
Comment is from Francis Bograza. Hi, my name is Francis. I am 10 years old and a fifth grader at Conley Elementary in Mrs. Friend's class. I'd like to talk about why it's so difficult for me to learn at home and why I have so many missing assignments. It is really hard for me to learn at home because there are so many distractions. Being on my Chromebook for a couple hours straight is really hard for me because I don't really get to stretch my legs out. It's hard for me to learn when my sister is on Zoom too and when I have to be on a computer for hours at a time. I can't really focus or get my work done when I'm at home because there are lots of stuff that I could be doing instead, and whenever I start doing something, my mind wanders off and I can't focus. I can't learn when my learning is looking and listening to someone on a screen. It makes me really frustrated when I don't have someone to teach something to me or to show me how to do my work in person. I'd really like it to see my friends and teacher in person. I would love it if I could go back to school. Francis.
This next comment is from Christina Stewart. Dear Superintendent and School District 158 board members, I hope this email finds you all healthy and well. My name is Christina Stewart, and I have two children at Huntley High School, a freshman and a junior. I'm writing in response to the high school hybrid plan. First, I would like to mention that I appreciate that there has been an enormous amount of thought and planning on working, on providing the best education to the kids in our district during this world pandemic. However, based on the current increase of COVID-19 in our community, I do not feel it is safe to bring large amounts of students back into the building. Some of the points that concern me most in the hybrid plan are passing periods, 50 teenagers unmasked during lunchtime, and no plan for cleaning desks and surfaces. I feel bringing a large number of students along with teachers and staff into one building will make the school a transmission vector. Over the past few months, there's been talk of small in-person groups. I'm wondering why that wasn't implemented as a starting point for students with IEPs and those who are struggling. If the district moves forward with a six through 12 hybrid plan, I feel that it will be just that much longer before all our kids get back into the school safely. I have heard that there are a large number of teachers that are against the plan. I am concerned that forcing teachers to instruct in person will be detrimental in the long run. I worry that our district will lose many great teachers whose voices are not being heard. If the hybrid plan moves forward, my kids will remain remote learners. I certainly appreciate having the choice. I'm very concerned that in-class students will take priority over the remote learners. I would like to know what measures will be put in place to ensure that in-school and remote learners will be treated equally. In conclusion, I urge you to reconsider the high school hybrid plan that brings so many kids into the building, potentially increasing the rate of affection in our community. I feel that by delaying a hybrid plan until COVID numbers decrease will allow our teachers to focus their time on all students in a manner and routine that they've become accustomed to over these last few months. Kind regards, Christina Stewart.
This comment is from Jemima Bograza. Hello, I'm not sure if this topic will be discussed at tomorrow's meeting, however, I'd like to reach out about future reopening/hybrid plan. I'd like clarification on why other surrounding schools in McHenry County are going back four days a week from eight to one, and we are drastically under that. I'm extremely disappointed in our highly innovative, well-sought-after school district and the complete lack of decision-making, especially since there were at least three months this summer to come up with this plan. It should not be ascribed that kids and parents would like to return to in-person learning. The five total hours a week feels like a slap in the face to appease us. It is disheartening to continue hearing you are making every effort to bring them back safely when that isn't true. I'm sure you are quite aware of the negative impact this is having on our children long term. My fifth grader has become depressed, isolated, angry, and temperamental. We are considering private school because what they are doing now is not school. They are not learning, but rather being assigned tasks for the majority of the day. I have overheard on more than one occasion, students being singled out and reprimanded in front of their Zoom class for not doing activities or doing certain seesaw activities early. My children are in How can we expect them to get settled and get their brains working only to stop during their morning momentum and send them home? After lunch, nothing happens. They hate Zoom school now and mentally check out at 11:30 every day. My children cannot grasp the concept of independent work, which has created a less-than-ideal situation at home. I am not their teacher, nor should I be, and I do not have availability to continue sitting with them, attempting to guide them on this asynchronous work. I have my own career to be mindful of, especially with the additional expense of faster internet, childcare providers, and most likely a family therapist, as this is taking a toll on the emotions of our entire family. Please, as you make your decisions, keep all students always at the forefront. This isn't about the teachers, who are trying their best, or the teachers' unions. This is about our children. Thank you. Jemima Pograzza.
Next comment is from Brittany Burek. Hello, when I, when school stopped in March, I have the, been feeling worse every day. The mental and emotional toll that remote learning has taken on me is far worse than the 0% COVID death rate for school-aged children in McHenry County. Every day, I wake up disappointed, knowing that I will not be in the building enjoying school like it was meant to be, and I feel all of my opportunities have been taken away from me. High school is only a short four-year window, and it hurts me seeing that all the fun, unique social opportunities specific to high school are disappearing by the day. I feel down and worn out instead of feeling normal like I used to. I can't imagine how isolating and painful it would be staying home for remote learning any longer. I miss being able to interact with staff and students every day in real life, and I really hope this can happen soon. Thanks. Brittany Burek.
This comment is from Brianna Burek. Hello, I'm a sophomore at A. D. Beth, and like the rest of the District 158 students, I am participating in remote learning. There have been many social, emotional, and mental struggles that come with not being in a school environment, and I feel like I am getting cut short on my educational experience. I cannot grow and develop as a student in person from behind a screen at my house. Interaction with other peers and staff is an essential part of high school and is a solid education. I believe it is important to have real in-person communication to learn and help build confidence academically and even socially. When learning via Zoom, there are many struggles that prevent students like me from maximizing their education. There are internet issues such as unclear audio, inability to communicate due to call restrictions, and slow internet that can sometimes prevent students from joining calls. The small amount of knowledge that I have learned this year has come from other sources instead of my teachers, and I am not getting taught the content directly like I used to at school. The teachers are pushing out the content not with the intention to help us learn, but to fulfill their bare minimum teaching requirements. These technical and academic struggles are not even close to the toll that this has had on me mentally, socially, and emotionally. Being able to interact with other students and staff has made me feel confident, included, and content. Without this daily face-to-face interaction, I find myself feeling worthless and neglected. I have trouble sleeping, and I now find it hard to focus, and I often feel restless in and out of class. Every night, I've been struggling with extreme panic and mental breakdowns, and every morning, I struggle finding a purpose to live every day. I have left them three years of high school, and those years should be enjoyed without those struggles. High school should be an uplifting experience with real social and educational experiences. Listening to students' voices and caring about them means fitting an environment, uh, and fitting an environment to their social, mental, and emotional needs. If you truly love us and care about us, like you say you do, you would listen to students like me who are struggling. I used to love school, and now I despise it, knowing the misery it gives me each day. It is not healthy for me to have limited interaction with the people that I used to see every day. Going back to in-person learning will save the mental health of many stressful students who are looking to actually enjoy their experience at school. The purpose of being at school is to help us grow and develop instead of holding us back. What's more harmful than contracting the virus, the virus itself, is the long-term mental, emotional, and social damage being caused. Please give me my life back. I want to live the way a high schooler should be living. Sincerely, Brianna Burek. Safe at this time.
This next comment is from Kelly Swanson. Good evening, Board members and Dr. Rowe. My name is Kelly Swanson. I'm in my fifth year working as a Spanish teacher at Huntley High School. I love, I have loved my job here at Huntley High School, but now I'm dreading waking up in the morning to come to work. I've never been that way because I love my job. However, this is all taking a toll on me. I arrive at school most mornings at 6:30 and I leave around 3:00 PM, but that doesn't mean my workday is done. My inbox is constantly flooded with emails from parents and students all hours of the day. I feel inclined to answer them right away. I receive emails all hours of the night, including many past 2:00 AM, demanding me to reopen the homework that was due at midnight. When I wake up in the morning to complete my health screening, more emails from parents and students. When do we, the teachers, get a break to unplug and take care of ourselves? Our motto is "All Students Always, But What About Us?" We love you and we care about you, but here are 20 more things we can expect you to do for the students. Enough is enough. We're barely holding on, and now you're going to throw even more onto our place because of this hybrid plan. No daily health screening for students, constant cleaning of the classroom, very little time to change classrooms, live streaming and paying attention to the students in our classroom, writing up students if they aren't wearing their masks correctly, and the list goes on and on. If you love us and care about us, you wouldn't change what is already working for the teachers and students until the semester is over. I'm tired, overworked, and emotional, and will not be able to see my family for the holidays if we return to school November 2nd. Yet, we're sending the students back to school and allowing them to travel to see their extended families in other states and potentially have them bring COVID into our schools. It's selfish, and you're giving a lot of your teachers an overwhelming amount of anxiety. Please reconsider what you're doing. We not only want what is best for our students and their families, but ourselves as well. Sincerely, Kelly Swanson.
This comment is from Tammy Dees. After hearing the teacher comments from last week's meeting regarding the hybrid plan for grades six through 12, for the first time ever, I'm left feeling like my children are a burden and inconvenience to our staff. I'm incredibly disappointed with our district that seven months after the start of the pandemic and almost three months after the decision to go remote, there is absolutely no progressive plan in place to return to school full-time. Amazingly enough, you were able to have staff, students, and parents collaborate last year on a five-year plan for our destination district, but apparently lacked the same urgency and necessity on returning our children to school. I've heard lots of varying opinions last week on the proposed hybrid plan for sixth through 12, but did not hear one remark about how this plan is beneficial and helpful for our students. Aside from safety precautions, I would love to hear reasoning as to how returning our students under this plan is beneficial for them as it seems minimal and counterproductive. As it appears, it's nothing short of fulfilling a request instead of listening to the need. In addition, my kids are becoming resentful because of this new way of learning, and I fear that once they return to the classroom, the student-teacher relationship will be greatly strained as a result of this process. While their grades may be one measure of success, it fails to highlight the entire picture. Are they being challenged academically? No. Are they properly prepared to take AP tests? No. Are they prepared to enter the next phases of their academics? No. They are more isolated, have greater stress, and lack motivation to do the simplest tasks. They have lost all structure to their lives. Teachers, staff, and administration are still waking up every day and going to work. Our kids are going nowhere, literally and figuratively. Our kids need to return to school. For years, I've watched this community support our teachers in the classroom as we realize how important and essential they are to our children. It's unfortunate that teachers don't see their own self-worth during this time. A disappointed and disheartened parent, Tammy Dees.
This next comment is from Nancy Miller. District 158 Board members, like almost every other family in District 158, I want my kids to go back to campus. I understand that learning is usually best in person. Children benefit from social, emotional engagement that only comes from the school environment. Unfortunately, that's where my desire ends. There is a very loud and very aggressive element in our district to insist our children need to be back in school. They point to outdated reports and tell stories of their own heartbreaks. I feel for these children, I do, but it is clear they do not feel for mine. My concern is not the precautions the district has put in place. My concern is not the ability of the teaching staff to keep my kids safe. My concern is the very same people who insist the schools are safe enough to return are not the same people who are making an effort to keep them that way. I've seen these same, these very same people constantly ignore CDC and state guidelines in favor of their own desires. These are the same families who travel out of state to well-known hotspots, attend political rallies without wearing masks, and hold Hoco parties in their homes without any regard for social distancing. They go in masks, masks to places like Parkside and call other customers maskholes for wearing a mask while they are walked to their table. They deny science and expect their actions to have no impact on those around them. I'm not afraid of the virus. I'm not afraid to go outside. I'm not afraid to send my kids to school. I'm afraid that these parents who knowingly put others at risk and willingly promote the spread of this deadly virus, my children's health is secondary to their social engagements and the desire to live vicariously through their own children. It is because of this small group of parents that I will not be sending my children to campus. Until we as a community have the decency to consider how our actions impact others, I cannot trust them to do the right thing for their own children. How can I trust them to do the right thing for mine? Nancy Miller.
This comment is from Jennifer Kovach. Good evening. I want to take a moment to say thank you. Thank you to the teachers. You have been amazing through this horrible situation. From having to learn how to do your job all over in a new way, to all of the extra hours put in to do so, to the stress of feeling attacked by some members of the community on top of everything else, thank you. There are many of us who appreciate you and what you do for our children. Thank you to Dr. Rowe, the school board, and administration. Thank you for the many hours put into planning and meeting and working to try to figure out the best options to keep everyone learning and also safe. In an impossible time, when there are no good answers, many of us appreciate you and what you do for our children. In a time when everything seems to be political and polarizing, I hope our community can come together with compassion and understanding for each other and for the situation as it is. To actually know and understand the parameters of what is currently possible and what that means. To know what you are really asking for in these difficult times and align your expectations accordingly. Lastly, be kind. Our children are watching and learning. Sincerely, Jennifer Kovach.
This next comment is from Deborah Floss. I'm the parent of a sixth grader, an eighth grader, and a tenth grader in District 158. I urge you to move forward with a plan that allows in-person school for sixth through 12th graders on November 2nd, 2020. The school board stated that safety measures were met, and the county guidelines showed we were safe to return to the hybrid model. Teachers may see my kids and think that they're thriving in remote learning, but I see them every day and I can assure you that they're not thriving. They're struggling to get out of bed. They're struggling to find anything they enjoy about school. Their pediatrician and therapist all agree it would be healthier and better for their development to attend school in person right now. The effects of the past seven months include increased anxiety, increased depression, lack of physical activity, paranoia in leaving the house, weight gain, and becoming less and less engaged in school. When the children go on mute, go on mute and don't use cameras during school, do the teachers hear or see them crying? No, but I do. If the kids were in school, teachers would see the frustration and these tears. The kids don't feel that their teachers are connecting with them at all. They cannot always see what the teacher is presenting, it's hard to hear, and the system lags frequently. We understand being in school will be different. My kids understand it will be different, but they are still excited to go to school, even without lockers, with social distancing, and wearing masks. Seeing other people besides me and their family is an opportunity to make friends, engage more meaningful in school, have conversations and together, together. Getting them back on a schedule now and showing up to school will improve their overall attitude. It is safe to return to school now according to the dashboard metrics. District 158 has a hybrid plan, and waiting until January to start this plan would increase the negative effects it's having on our kids right now. Our kids deserve better right now. Please put the kids first and move forward with the choice to allow sixth through 12th graders to return to school on November 2nd, 2020. Thank you for your time, Deborah Floss.
This comment is from Teresa Bell. School has never been easy for my youngest son. He has struggled to fit in and has always felt like he was less than those, he calls the "popular kids." While I cannot say that he was directly bullied, he was definitely made aware that he was not good enough. He has a great group of friends, and he has managed to cut out of space for himself. He is involved in sports and outside activities. Despite this, he often comes home frustrated and anxious about comments or looks he is given by those who think he is weird. He feels judged and has put him in a constant state of anxiety while at school. His feelings are far from rare. I have spoken to countless other parents who deal with the very same thing. Being a kid is difficult, and there are always students who lift themselves up by trying to put others down. While virtual learning has not been easy, it has greatly reduced the pressures associated with the peer's behavior. My child is thriving for the first time. He goes to class. He learns his lessons, and he gets his schoolwork done on time. His grades are up, and we no longer have doubts of nighttime hysteria. His teachers have been supportive, supportive and are always available to answer questions or offer extra support. He does not need to worry about the constant judgment or snide remarks that usually fall below the teacher's view. He is able to continue social activities through a structured and safe plan. He is able to be himself without the pressures that so many teens and pre-teens face every day. He is actually happy. I was excited to learn that so many others are feeling the same way. In speaking with our pediatrician, we learned that social anxiety levels for many have actually improved since our schools went virtual learning. I was confused since so many parents are complaining that their children are suffering. I came to understand that those who are suffering now have never had to struggle with these issues before. Things have come full circle, and they are dealing with the issues that others have been facing for years. While no one wants to see any child struggle, it is important to realize that there has never been one solution that works for everyone. Many children are actually doing better this year because of virtual learning. They are receiving the services that they need and are able to focus on their education without the emotional stressors that often take priority in school. For the first time, I feel like the average learner is finally the priority. The athletes, the popular kids, and the gifted children are now on the same level as everyone else. This has created a new mindset for so many students and has relieved the anxiety for so many parents. Regardless of what the future holds, I hope that schools remember that the average student is dealing with far more social pressure than they let on. Although the parents of the typical student may not be as vocal as some other parental groups, we are here, we are listening, reading, and we see what is happening. We know that we know our kids can succeed when given an equal chance. Thank you for all you are doing to make this year work for all students while keeping them healthy. We know it has been hard, and your efforts are being noticed and appreciated. Teresa Bell.
This next comment is from Carrie Baughman. Dear Board, Cabinet, and Community Members, it is important to keep in mind that no option right now for schooling is truly a good option. Anything short of normalcy is not ideal. As an RTI facilitator, teacher, HEA secretary, and grievance chair, and parent, I recognize the struggle that is before us all. No matter the stakeholder position we assume in District 158, there is no obvious win. That being said, I feel that all those in attendance for this meeting should know that the current plan that has been proposed to the community has serious health and safety concerns. I'm sure you'll receive many of those letters and hear those concerns tonight, so I will not elaborate further. In an effort to be transparent, I just want to make you aware that although you have not heard strong pushback from the elementary building, the task for us to be prepared by Monday seems insurmountable. I'm not asking that we don't move forward as planned, but I'm asking that you allow us to stay in this new model unless we need to move back because of health and safety concerns, at least, at the very least, through the month of December. There simply are not enough hours, not enough working hours, just the standard 24 hours in a day to get everything done and done well. It's true, people stay up all night, people cry daily. I, myself, have run the gamut of emotions this school year. I have had kids back with me in the RTI program here at Leggie. I'm incredibly grateful for and proud of the staff members who have stepped up to make all these extra things happen. In the last week, it was really only two days to work on the changes necessary for the new cycle of RTI. I spent five hours logging kids into PowerSchool to track their intervention. That was supposed to be done by mid-September. I finally had the chance on Columbus Day to get that done. Between Tuesday and Friday, my team and I created, created schedules to make RTI available for all the kids we could, we possibly could. It took three of us a full day to create this schedule, three mandates for one schedule. Emails to teachers alone were five, five hours of time, much of which were done between It took three of us a full day to create this schedule, three mandates for one schedule. Emails to teachers alone were five hours of time, much of which were done between the hours of 2:00 and 5:00 a.m. We still need to set up rooms, create parent letters, hard and electronic, create seating charts, put in furniture requests, gather materials for our in-person and remote students, create lesson plans, add Zoom links. Those are all supposed to be done by tomorrow, Friday. It won't be, much of it will be done over the weekend when I have time. Please, I know it sounds ridiculous, but be merciful. We need time to catch our breath. We've finally just gotten to that point. Not only do we need a chance to get things done, we need consistency for our students and our families. The burnout is real, not just for our certified staff. The burnout is also evident in our administration and our peer professionals. Sincerely, Carrie Baughman.
This comment is from Anna Meridian. Hi, everyone. I want to thank everyone for all their hard work this school year. My kids are happy with the remote learning. They are engaged, turning their work in, and the nice part, they tell me about what they're doing during lunchtime. They come down at different times, so it is truly a pleasure to get those times with them. We have a sophomore, eighth grader, fourth grader, and we have a preschooler at home that will be in kindergarten in the district next school year. My elementary child is staying remote for now. She's thriving and happy at home, so we decided this is best for her for now. I ask that as you make decisions, as time goes on, for more in-person time, that you think of the kids who are at home, remote for various reasons. We all have our own reasons and every family is unique. Every change also affects the kids who stay remote, just like the kids now not having a morning Zoom every day. That is my daughter's favorite. She's at that computer early, waiting for 8:30 a.m. for her Zoom to begin. Starting her day with her teacher is amazing for her. She has adjusted to the idea of on-her-own work in the morning and an afternoon Zoom, but each step into the building is a sacrifice somewhere else. This all needs to be balanced so that none of the kids are left with less live time and interaction. The breakout rooms on Zoom have been wonderful. Her teacher has even put her on a breakout room to help other students with their links. She loves it and it makes her feel proud to help. She is happy with her classmates and teachers. My greatest fear is that at some point you'll switch their teachers, and I can say even through a screen, these teachers have fostered relationships with their students. For the upper level, I ask everyone to be patient. Changes at this point in the semester seem very disruptive, but I understand some need in person, so that is why we are going over different plans. My older kids are doing well, too. My eighth grader has a better GPA remote than he did in person last year. His teachers are all great. My high schooler is doing well, too, and her teachers have been responsive when she's needed any extra help. I feel they get more interaction in our home than they would at school, so I do think the people rushing to go back don't understand their kids will not be getting socialization, the socialization they want for their kids. Those needs, they say their kids are having problems with, won't be solved by going back. Lunch and other things will look different. My kids have said they'd rather have lunch or study hall here at home. Today, my son has no homework to work on in study hall. He does things like Boy Scout stuff, goes in the yard or plays with his little sister. He has lunch and then study hall back-to-back, so I worry what that time would be like at school. We need to be realistic with our kids, what school will be like, as that may be worse on their mental health. After listening to last week's board meeting, they will be all remote and we will reevaluate next semester. But at this time, they have more interaction and freedom to move their bodies a bit at home. Thank you very much as you move forward for thinking of all the kids in our district always. Both hybrid and remote have unique needs to consider. That balance is very hard, and I can't imagine having to be the one to come up with these plans. I want you to have some positive experiences heard, as we all need that nowadays. Anna Meridian.
This next comment is from Sasha Wizerick. I titled this email the real world for many reasons. One, in the real world, if most of us don't want to do what our bosses require us to do, we would be fired. Two, in the real world, if one didn't feel safe at work, one should discuss with their boss, and hopefully, they would supply the proper equipment to allow one to do their job safely. Three, the district has taken all the necessary measures to allow teachers, administrators, students, et cetera, to be safe. And the real word of 2020, that's how the real world is functioning if we want to get paid. Four, teachers are an essential part of the real world. We need teachers, and if they don't want to teach because they don't feel safe, then that's prerogative, then resign. That's reality. I work in healthcare and I put myself at risk every day. Thank God I have not gotten COVID yet. I wear a mask, I wear gloves, wash my hands, and sanitize as it's my job. I've had to provide for my family. I have to be an active member of a society to pay bills and my high taxes in the school district that we moved to because it was top-notch. To help pay teachers' salaries and then to teach our kids so our kids can then go on to help be the asset to the community because that's how it works in the real world. Our kids are our future, and right now, some of these teachers are letting our kids down. When I hear teachers tell the kids that school is not going to be like, sure, this is correct, but isn't it their job to market school and make learning and education fun? I couldn't imagine my husband walking into the corporation he works for and using scare tactics on his customers. He would surely be let go faster than you can say coronavirus. Teachers should not be influencing the students by stating how bad in a person's learning is going to be. And teachers will just be behind a shower curtain, will only respond to you via Zoom on your computer? I truly hope the teacher that said this was just kidding. Teachers have an influence on our kids, and right now, the teachers stating how bad in-person learning is going to be is appalling. Teachers should not be sharing their personal views with students about e-learning, in-person learning, or political views. Let the students form their own opinions by teaching them where to find the proper resources, then to research it, and then form their own opinions, because this is how the real world works. I know teachers didn't sign up for any of this when they took the job. I get that. In the real world, everyone's job has changed, and it's not easy on any of us mentally, physically, or financially. We have to show our kids that we can persevere and make the best of this. The real world sucks right now. It's scary, but we can't keep living this way. To the students that want to teach and feel essential, thank you. We appreciate you. Don't be scared. The risk is no greater than walking out the door every single day. Thank you.
This comment is from Austin Angling. Dear District 158, I am an eighth grader from Heinemann Middle School. I am writing this letter in hope that you will consider what our feelings and opinions on remote learning are. I believe that I can speak for most, if not all, students here that remote learning is not an ideal change for our learning environment and our education. This year has been an up-and-down roller coaster, mostly down, but one of my biggest concerns with this year is the effects COVID-19 has had on our education. I do understand that circumstances have made it difficult to deliver our lives normally, but I hope you can take into consideration the opinion of a firsthand student struggling with the impact of online learning. Remote learning has been a conflict for many students, including myself. It can be hard for students to sit all day looking at a computer screen, especially in an environment that easily distracts us, such as home. With a lack of routine, learning online can have negative effects on not just our academics, but our mental health. For some, school is a safe place where you can interact with friends and trusted adults. For others, school is the only place that students can really interact with others at all. All summer long, a lot of us were outside hanging out with friends. As colder weather and eventually winter approaches, school may be the only social interaction students can get outside of their immediate family. Interacting with friends through text or social media is not the same as seeing them in person every day at school. With remote learning, social interaction during the colder months will be prevented. This can affect many students mentally. Remote learning has many other negative impacts on us other than mental health, though. Learning online has proven to give a lack of motivation when it comes to academics. Many students rely on detailed instruction in person. No matter how advanced technology may get, online learning can never simulate what it is like to get information and instruction from a teacher in person. Coming from an A student, it is very hard to keep focused and to complete all of the necessary work due. I will find myself with multiple missing assignments and with no motivation to complete any of them until absolutely required. Now, I understand that COVID-19 has made it difficult for our district to go back in person, but I know that even a couple days in person every week would really mean the world to all of us students, including myself. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Austin Angling.
This next comment is from Ann Morse Felder. Hi, my name is Ann Morse Felder, and I'm both a parent and a teacher in the district. I wanted to come speak in person tonight to show that I am supporting in-person learning. Unfortunately, my allergies kicked in this afternoon. As a parent, I have three children in the district. I have a junior at the high school, who, by the way, was happy to go to the building yesterday for the PSAT. I have an eighth grader at Heinemann, yep, at Heinemann, and a fourth grader at Conley. Over the past seven months, I have seen the roller coaster emotions they have gone through. They have been excited every time there has been discussion about going back to school. Then there have been the disappointments when the hope has been taken away. None of them like remote learning. They miss their peers and being able to get instant response from a teacher or classmate when they've had a problem. My older girls, however, have adjusted and done well overall. My fourth grade son, on the other hand, hasn't fared so well. His teacher always lets him know when he isn't in Zoom. He has no problem going on YouTube, but is unmotivated to do any of his schoolwork in any form. With my husband and I both working, it's my older girls that have been responsible for making sure he is safe at home during the school day. With their own schoolwork to do, however, they can't constantly be watching his work. Basically, we're asking our nine-year-old to be responsible for his own education. That is not fair for anyone. Despite the short amount of time, he's excited to go back to school. We all wish it could be full days, but he is at least happy to know that a few good friends will be there at the same time. Now, my views as a teacher. It's very difficult to leave my house each day when my kids are still at home just to go to an empty classroom so I can sit at my desk and talk to the computer, where my students are muted and most don't want to show themselves on a camera. It's been one of the loneliest times in my life. A teacher friend used the word eerie. It is indeed eerie. I long for the fleeting moments when my students unmute to join in the conversation or ask a question, or the rare times a student pops into my Zoom to get individual help. I know that teaching students in person and on Zoom at the same time will be challenging, but it's not ideal. Ideal would be all students in the classroom every day. I support the stepping stone, though. Having students in the classroom will bring it to life. Even though I only see half their faces and they will only see half of mine, I will go over something again. I will be able to see if they're following along, and I know when I can move on. I will be able to give students a break from their Chromebooks for a block of time. I teach the new Project Lead the Way course at Marlo. I'm currently teaching an introduction to engineering where we do a lot of hands-on work. In person, they can more easily see my example and can see what they're doing. Students can easily get ideas from their fellow classmates because they can see what those people are doing. I would also be able to hand out consumable materials they had trouble finding at home. To wrap up, I'm not blind to the fact that we will have a greater chance of exposure to illness with students in the building. I completely understand the fear of those who have their own or a family member's health to worry about. There are health concerns in my family, too. I have elderly parents, and I know that loneliness and depression looks like, it's just scary. I think with a PPE and other safety precautions, we can get through, as the motto says, "All students always."
This comment is from Logan Cross. To the board, your school's current education system isn't working. It has turned me into a mindless husk of who I used to be. I used to be happy and fun and be able to show some emotion. I thought that school was supposed to help me, but this has hurt me more than anything. I was a good student, but since remote learning has taken over, it is impossible to stay focused and have any motivation on getting my stuff done. My grades have never been this low, and neither has my concern for my education. I'm not learning anything, just trying to get some work turned in enough that my parents don't take away as my only lifeline to my friends. But after sitting, being talked at for about six hours every day, the last thing I want to do is sit in my room any longer and do more homework. Imagine working a 9:00 to 5:00 job and having to do overtime every day with no incentive to do it. I'm sure a lot of adults do that, but they are getting a paycheck and they are seeing other humans. My family moved here three years ago to get out of our townhouse and to be able to have our own backyard, but we mainly moved here for a better school. My old school seemed like it had a low budget. This one has a way higher budget, but still seems like it has $7 to work with. Now with remote learning, we have had to adjust everything we do with little or no support. My parents try to help, but they can only do so much. My dad works two jobs as a firefighter and my mom stays home, but she is busy helping my five-year-old brother in kindergarten and my 10-year-old sister who has Down Syndrome in her fifth grade special education class. Sharing Wi-Fi with two other Chromebooks running in my house, even though we have good Wi-Fi, is not always the best. That alone causes me to miss information and sometimes get looted from classes or not be able to log in on time or at all. Sure, we may be doing seventh grade work, but we're being forced to do it like college students. We don't have the focus or ability to be college students at 12 years old. My parents expect me to do well, but at the same time are trying not to add more stress, but the overall expectations are very hard to meet. School shouldn't be this hard or this isolated. Plus, at my age, social interaction is necessary, and without that, it can kill us. Maybe not physically, but mentally, it is destroying us. My parents have been writing and speaking and fighting for us to get school back, but it doesn't seem to be doing anything. I feel like there is no hope of seeing my school or friends this year and that the adults that should be fixing this are failing us. Logan Cross.
This next comment is from Kim Secetti. Good evening. As we enter another week of discussions and debates, we also enter another week that has seen increased positivity rates across the county, with McHenry holding and increasing above 8% for seven straight days, which again leads to the question of why we're rushing a return to school. Numbers are increasing in every part of the metrics from positivity to hospitalization. Another high school just went all remote because of cases, and our neighboring district has been back for a week and already has cases. The goal should be minimal disruption to education, and by not rushing back to school, all there will be is disruption. I also think it's important to make sure everyone knows that the school environment will actually be, there will be no socialization like so many want and think will happen. Seating charts in every room, seating charts at lunch, no group activities. School will not be what everyone wants or thinks it will be. The whole community needs to be considered as the district moves forward. This is not just about a certain group of parents, it's about everyone who makes up the district and the community. Along with the whole community, everyone needs to look at the big picture, not the right now. Rushing into anything will lead to disruption to education, illness, and possible death. To get back to the better normal, we have to take the necessary safety steps now and keep kids remote. When safety is the driving force, we will all be better off in the long run. Thank you. Kim Secetti.
This comment is from Beverly Smith, who noted that this is a continuation of her letter from last week. In reflecting on this plan, I do not believe the benefits outweigh the negatives. Let me explain the cons from my list. Less teacher contact time. Under the proposed plan and my administrator's suggestion, my students would go from three hours, 15 minutes of live instruction time with me down to two hours. This is a 48% decrease. Less student accountability. Under this plan, there is no attendance required for asynchronous days. This is a shift from my current practice. I am live every day with all my classes now. This will not be the case under a hybrid model. More busy work and less actual teaching. Several options have been discussed with pushing out asynchronous work to those students on their off days. Cutting the already-cut curriculum. We will once again be forced to cut the amount of our curriculum we will be able to cover. Fewer opportunities for students to work in groups. I will not be able to run effective breakout rooms with multiple students in the classroom who cannot sit in proximity of one another. Changing student schedules and possible teachers/teams. This will be inevitable as we work to accommodate a safe number of students into the building. Students will have to adjust to new schedules, teachers, and students in a class. Sanitation issues. Allowing students to sanitize the classroom. I, per one, am not comfortable having a student clean the room, nor do I think it is appropriate for me to have to sanitize my own classroom several times a day with no added protection. Plexiglass has been installed in our library and barriers are in place in the office, but nothing has been done in any teachers' classrooms. Adding a pump or wall station of hand sanitizer hardly makes me feel safe. Not being able to share most classroom materials. Whiteboards, markers, coloring supplies, books, et cetera, would have to be sanitized after each use, not realistic. And the most obvious negative, increasing everyone's exposure to a novel deadly virus. Seriously, need I say more? For the proponents of the social-emotional well-being of our students, the idea of being back to school but not really being able to socialize seems much more depressing than the interactions we are able to have now, even with being remote. This is my 30th year teaching, my 22nd with V158. I absolutely love teaching. I love my students and my school and the district, and I love being an educator. Right now, remote learning is not perfect, nor even ideal, but it is the safest choice for all. I feel that I have finally made some progress in the last few weeks where I am no longer working 16-hour days, but still only planning one day at a time. The thought of now reinventing my plans yet again is so frustrating and depressing. I know that our district's motto is "All students always," but we have staff to consider as well. I volunteered my time this summer to be part of our district's staff wellness committee. I feel that the discussions we had and the potential solutions we developed are not even a consideration, as I and countless others are now forced to once again go back to my doctor for advice on how to handle my severe asthma. The documentation that I provided and was required in August is now meaningless, and I have already had to be foreseen for 14 days since September due to my own health issues not related to COVID.
Are you done?
There is a little more, if you'll permit.
Okay, thank you quick.
I was able to fulfill my teaching duties from home, a much safer environment for me. That option will no longer be available when we return to a hybrid model. So maybe instead of "All students always," our motto needs to be "All members of V158 always." Perhaps now more than ever, our community needs to get creative on ways to increase safe social interactions for our kids instead of once again relying on teachers to now be social workers, psychiatrists, psychologists, et cetera. We are educators, not miracle workers. I understand the economic toll that remote instruction has on the community, but if returning in a hybrid model does nothing but allowing parents to gain two days of free childcare, that is not a good enough reason for me. This is an unprecedented time that none of us have ever experienced. We are living with a deadly, highly contagious virus that is gaining on us as numbers are increasing in many areas of the country. God help us when, not if, a staff member or student gets seriously ill. I just really hope the community understands what they're getting.
Next time, just stop. Okay, it was too long.
This next comment is from Diane Bitman. Our students have been out of school since March of 2019 with e-learning. Seven months later, the rest of the world has changed, adapted, and made things work, except education, especially in District 158. Our kids see their parents going to work every day. Both of us have been innovative in how to make it work and have made accommodations in our job, but still go to work. Yes, even with public interactions. We were nervous, especially since so new with little known about it, but we still did what was needed doing. We're problem solvers. We contribute and we move forward even when the going gets tough. When COVID hit and everything was in tight shutdown, our high school son recognized the need for someone to help fulfill orders online at the grocery store to help the community and increased his work hours. Yes, there was concern and fear by us as parents. However, we do not choose to live in fear. We are smart. We take precautions, but we do what we need to do and move forward. This is apparently not what the schools and teachers do and our kids see this. Our kids have seen our teachers be hysterical. When the hybrid model was proposed in July and discussed on Facebook, I vocalized support of the district doing this. A teacher, I won't name names, I'm going to modify, called me an inappropriate name for agreeing with the district on the hybrid model. They felt I wished their death by wanting the hybrid model. The teacher took it down shortly after, however, my kid already saw it. Our teachers teach fear. When the union spoke, he spoke of all the reasons why teachers couldn't teach and why it wouldn't work. On community forums, we hear how trying new things will make it worse and not be worth it. The teachers' union with all the expertise and knowledge could collaborate and come up with solutions and positive ways to move forward. Instead, what are they teaching? Fear of trying. Fear of moving forward. Our kids hear you. What else are they learning this year? Despite having some great teachers and trying hard at e-learning, not much. Kudos to the teachers for trying, but frequently unreliable technology. Restless kids, bored and depressed kids, it's not working. Little direct teacher interaction with actual teaching, especially at the high school level. In fact, my high school senior has zero teaching time this entire week. Monday, Tuesday, and Friday are off. No teaching on Wednesday due to PSATs. Today, every single one of his Zoom classes were canceled and replaced with busy work. Meanwhile, in Indiana, my sister's son is in an e-learning environment every day since the start of the school year. School is so much about academics, but equal importance are the social emotional milestones that occur within the school setting that help us develop. With this continued e-learning, what I worry about as a healthcare practitioner of 26 years, including in public schools, is as follows. Elementary school, as a physical therapist at Corinian, argued against Chromebooks in elementary schools. Kids desperately need fine motor that teach, holding a pen or pencil for writing coordination, visual tracking for scanning to enable reading, sensory experiences to promote understanding concepts, et cetera. They have short attention spans needing a variety of education experience. E-learning does not provide that. No more. Oh, I got two more.
Okay.
Oh. This next one is from Justin Cross to Dr. Rowe and the board. This letter will be shorter, but not so sweet, as the previous letters I have written to you and the board have garnered zero responses. We're two months into the school year and the board is patting itself on the back for coming up with a current hybrid plan that has kids in the classroom for a sum total of five hours in-person learning for the week. That isn't an ideal model for teaching or learning. I've been to and listened in onboard meetings. I have heard different opinions and personal sacrifices and struggles from families of the school district, as well as teachers and what they are going through. From what I've witnessed, the majority of the parents and students want to get back to school. And from what I recently found out, the teachers' union doesn't want to get back to school. But does that mean all the teachers don't want to return? I understand some teachers have comorbidities and so do some students. I'm a working fireman, paramedic of a large suburban, or a large suburb that runs 10,000-plus calls a year and I have hypertension. I've been going to work every day since COVID began, since Ebola, since the H1N1. And by the way, killed over 1,000 children from the ages of zero to seventeen and I'm still standing. I take precautions and everyone should. The inherent dangers to just about everything you do. If I may suggest an overly, overtly simple solution. Have parents sign waivers that their children go to school for in-person learning five days a week with teachers that want to be in the classroom as well. And for those families that are unable to attend in person, have them learn remotely from teachers that are unable to be in the classroom as well. I don't want people to put their lives at risk, but something's got to give. The health of a handful of teachers shouldn't override what is absolutely negative impact effect on all of the students' mental, psychological, and physical wellbeing. Even the World Health Organization states that lockdowns are bad for mental health. Sad that it took seven minutes for them to figure that out. So we're struggling, we're desperate, but most of all, we're frustrated by the lack of leadership. As a final thought, my wife and I were reviewing my seventh grader's current grades and he had a 1.8 GPA with a couple of Fs. Mind you, he was on the principal and honors list last year and has always been an AB student. He's disengaged and struggling. We've been very encouraging, but pragmatic in getting him to be more responsible and have a personal accountability. If I had to, I would give the board an F for the lack of responsibility to the families and districts. We have to stop living in fear, give the parents the choice to send their kids back to school. Thank you for your time, a disappointed parent, Justin Cross. And the last one is from Catherine Barnes, a fifth grader. Dear Huntley Board and Union, I'm a fifth grade student at Leggie and I have been there since kindergarten. I have made so many friends throughout the years, I haven't seen most of them since March. Yes, I appreciate your decision to let us go back, but let me ask you this. What difference is this making? The only thing that is different and kind of worse is that it's in-person and there are no other classes. You may be asking yourself, why is this worse to be back? It is simply because it will make us more upset that we can't be closer to normal. I get that it can't, won't be normal even if we did go to classes, but this is our last year of grade school and the last... And that last day in March may have been our last day of recess or even seeing people because people go to different middle schools. And I know that I will miss my teachers next year. All I want is it to be normal with just a few modifications like wearing a mask. Basically, what I'm saying is that there is no point of going back if there will only be two different days, two and a half hours per day. Is that on purpose to make us not want to go back? That is it in a nutshell. I cannot express enough how much I miss being in school. I don't think this is effective at all. Sincerely, Catherine Barnes.
Okay. About an hour of public comments. Appreciate all of them. A lot of varying degrees of thoughts and opinions, as you would expect. Appreciate, like you said, everyone taking the time it takes to put your thoughts on paper and do that came here in person. We don't have any other in-person public comments, do we? That came in late? Nope.
Nope.
Okay. All right. We are on to our fourth item, which is the secondary return to in-person learning update from Dr. Rowe. So do we have Dr. Rowe connected?
Yes, sir.
Good deal.
All right. I am going to share my screen. I will begin the presentation. Bear with me just a second while I get that set up. All right. You should be seeing that now. There it is.
Yep.
All right. Okay. So several of the slides that I'll be showing here this evening are a repeat from last week. I anticipate that we have a number of guests that are viewing the presentation this evening that did not see it last week. So I left a number of the slides that were presented last week in this presentation as well. I did take a good number of the visuals out of the classrooms as that isn't totally necessary in this particular presentation. But although some of them are repetitive, I think they're also very important. So since the decision to begin the year in a remote learning, we've been following the continuum toward in-person learning. We're nearing the end of quarter one. The last day of the quarter is tomorrow and tomorrow is the remote planning day. That officially is today. So which is the timeframe we identified from the beginning. Now, we're seeing success with the small groups coming in. You know, our special education self-contained classes are having great success. I've got an update on what that will look like coming forward that I'm excited to share with everyone this evening. And then our modified remote learning is going well. Obviously, there are bumps in the road there and some varying degrees of success from student to student. But our students and families, we've heard them. You heard a good number of the comments this evening that has been consistent throughout. They need and want more. And in-person learning, we believe and we hope can help with that. At the board's request, we're back this evening for an additional hybrid option for discussion to share with you this evening. So this is one of those slides that I wanted to revisit. I thought it was important to come back and look at the public health aspect of our situation and revisit some of the metrics that are guiding some of our decisions to be in person, that are guiding some of the decision as to why now is a good time for us to come back and why we're making that decision now, as well as update the most recent metrics. There's been some changes and unfortunately, we're not seeing the greatest trend taking place. We're watching that very closely. The Health Department matrix has been established, as I said. That was one of the areas that was sorely missing back in July when we made the decision to go remote. The current metrics are indicating that a hybrid learning environment is most appropriate now. They're recommending that, they're actually making a recommendation that hybrid is the learning environment that is appropriate for schools right now. They have the capacity for contact tracing and the planning for review in schools is also in place. They've been working wonderfully with our nurses in support of that contact tracing. The regional and local metrics, as well as the state guidance and county-wide consensus has stabilized, which was another major factor for why we shifted to remote. In the first place, is things were not stable back in July and they've definitely stabilized and we feel more comfortable about implementing those safety guidelines. And then ultimately, we're more confident in our ability to implement the public health guidelines and ensure that we can keep our students and staff safe when they're in the building with a high degree of fidelity. So the most updated metrics, I clicked and placed this chart in here just this afternoon, giving them the opportunity. It was last updated yesterday, but it's updated since last week, obviously. The incident rate, I'll explain. Actually, as of the last couple of days, we have ventured outside of that seven to 14 cases per 100,000 per day. But I'll explain the rationale behind that. We're still within the five to eight percent of the positivity. COVID-like illness and hospital admissions is still within the stable and decreasing range. And I can show that chart here momentarily. And then our weekly count of new cases, although it is increasing, it is still within the range. So then just to hop out into the live site to show you a live look at the metrics. And as we go down and I adjust the filter to show the last 10 days and give that a second to come, it's actually even been updated since I was in this afternoon. So you'll see that we ventured outside of the range for the last couple of days. It's kind of, the chart's kind of finicky. And hit that 15. And then here on the 12th, we came back down to 14. So in order for this metric to become an area where the county health department would consider marking that red and marking that an area of concern is seven of the last 10 days need to be above one of those lines, that red line or that green line. And so we only have at this point two days above the 14. So they won't make a determination until we have a consistent seven of the last 10 days above that mark. So they're not saying that all be there. So that is why we're still in that ballpark. The positivity rate has us at 6.2 as of October the 12th. This has been an interesting topic lately because the Northwest Herald has been reporting and McHenry County has had a positivity rate of 8.7. And yet the McHenry County Health Department has been reporting this much lower positivity rate. On a call with the superintendents this week, we raised that question with the Health Department. And their epidemiologists shared with us that they've been digging into that issue and that the Illinois Department of Public Health, due to the volume of tests that they're processing across the state, they're not, they don't have the ability to eliminate the duplicative data. So if a Northwestern Huntley Hospital orders a test and then say a Quest Diagnostics conducts the test and processes the test, evidently both of those sites have been submitting that report to IDPH for the same person. And so IDPH apparently has not been removing that duplicative data. And also apparently, there are people that have been getting the COVID test at two different locations. I don't know why you would put yourself through that agony, but apparently people have been getting tested at two different locations. Maybe a rapid test and then the normal nasal swab. But either way, if there's duplicative data, IDPH hasn't been removing that. McHenry County Department of Health has been removing the duplicative data, which is why their positivity rate is so much lower. They've been in contact with IDPH and IDPH validates that. And they were in conversation about releasing a press release so that the public could see that in the newspaper, which I think would be a really good move as that's been a point of contention and confusion as to why the two different reliable health sources are contradicting one another. Probably more information than you bargained for, but that's been a topic internally at least for the last number of days. And then the hospital admission rates, you've seen... Yes, sir.
Tony. Yeah, just because we've had a public comment from the same person the last two weeks and she cited again the positivity rate was over eight percent. And again, I was already had been on the website. I see the numbers, which really 6.2 is of the most recent date. And just that helped a little to understand where that person might be getting their data from. They're probably working off of the newspaper. But the McHenry County Department of Health is more accurate, correct?
That's correct. And Tony, I actually had a conversation with that parent last night in a parent meeting and explained that same thing. I assume that comment was probably submitted prior to that conversation. But I think that you're right. I think the McHenry County Department of Health is more reliable.
Eight percent is a critical threshold that we're utilizing. And I don't want that to go, that a public comment is made that in fact not really over eight percent.
That's correct. It is not. And it's a fluid situation and the local Department of Health is actively trying to is actively trying to be in contact with both the newspaper and IDPH to rectify it because it is confusing. In fact, I heard today that one of our teachers actually reached out and was in contact with the Northwest Herald, asking them why there is conflicting information and asking them if they would pursue it because it's causing confusion in the community. So I'm hoping that we get some answers and see that press release from the county health department come out soon or the Northwest Herald is able to dig and find that information out on their own. The health, the admissions in the hospitals, we've seen this increase, but again, it's increased from two to four and then up to five and has come back down, one we're paying attention to. An area here down at the bottom, we expect to see an increase. We've seen the all-cases count increasing lately. I will point out something I just learned yesterday. Those that are paying close attention to this, the September 27th date down here, this is a weekly range. And the county health department is reporting this data a week in the rears because they do so in order to be able to clean that data and make sure that duplicative data is removed and all of the locations that they're receiving information from, they can receive it. Because they can't update it daily if some of the smaller sites in the different corners of the county can't get it to them that fast. So that's why they do it by the week and that's why they want to ensure that all the data is appropriately cleaned and correct. But this is the week of September 27th. It's not ending on September 27th, so it's not three weeks old. It actually goes through October 3rd. And then it updates each Friday. So tomorrow, we'll actually get an updated information on this site that will update it through October the 10th, which is just last Saturday, and which will update it to be only one week behind us. But unfortunately, we are expecting this number to probably rise again. The good news is, is we're not seeing the youth count... The good news is, is we're not seeing the youth counts rise, but this continuing to rise will be one to pay attention to. That if this area rises and our incident rate rises, those may be the two areas to pay attention to that could cause us some problems moving forward. But I don't anticipate that that's going to cause us enough of a problem that we would be changing our plans for Monday. We still expect to be full speed ahead on Monday as we'll need longer than that for a change to be necessary. But just for full transparency, the trend data has not been, has not been heading in the right direction as of late. And moving on in the presentation here this evening. Building on some of that health and our building health itself, preparation for in-person learning, as I said, has been ongoing since last spring. Our PPE supplies, the sanitation processes and procedures are all in place. We've also gained quite a lot of experience from having our small groups in person. We have experienced positive tests that have occurred while in our buildings. We have not had transmission of the virus within our building. And contact tracing and processes have been exercised extremely well. I've said it before. Our nurses are doing a fantastic job. Could not be prouder of that group. We conducted an architectural review by WOLD for our spacing options. That is what I removed from this presentation, but that's accessible if necessary, if anyone's interested. And then the six-foot spacing is achievable due to the smaller in-person classes. But we'll know some specifics once the remote opt-ins become available and that discussion unfolds. So then the data review and support for our decision, just to review this again. I know I've repeated it a number of times, but I just want to be sure we're clear. The Health Department and the science-based metrics support our return to in-person learning. As I've said, we're monitoring it very closely. They've been rising, but it's something that we're monitoring daily and have been in constant contact with the Health Department to be sure that we are, that communication is flowing smoothly. Their staffs are ready to support us. The architectural reviews support our building capacities and we're ready for a hybrid return. And then our own internal safety reviews are saying that we can follow the guidelines and we're ready to manage a hybrid return and welcome students back to the building, six through 12. So what will that look like? So stages for in-person return, we thought that this might fit and merge where we, what we presented last week with the modifications that we're sharing with you tonight and how they merge together. So each stage does build on the previous step. And if you look at fully remote in terms of stage one, that's where we started off the school year. From last spring into the very beginning of this school year, where all students are remote, there are no students in the building. Stage two is where we currently are. We have small groups of students in the building. Our self-contained students are currently with us. Some of our intervention students are receiving interventions in the school. We're currently here. What we're sharing with you tonight would be a step towards, would be stage three, where we would be bringing 25% of our six through 12 students back. And that's stage three. Continuing the implementation of stage two, nothing would change there. Those self-contained groups are a separate matter. I'll explain that. And in addition to that 25%, we would be bringing in targeted groups for more time beyond the 25% of regular attendance. Targeted groups who are needing some additional in-person time to support their learning and I'll go into more detail about that. The anticipated start date of stage three remains November 2nd. And the anticipated start date of January, of stage four would be January 4th, start of the second semester. And you'll notice that stage four would be what we presented last week, which is that 50% return. And then ultimately achieving stage five, which is back to full in-person school. So what are some of the details or the benefits here of this option and the hybrid option? Again, we are offering families a choice, which we still firmly believe in. You know, that's been loud and clear from our families, that they value that choice on both sides of this. They value the choice between hybrid and the fully remote option. This plan allows for a high fidelity in complying with the public health guidelines, six feet of separation in every situation is of no concern. Students will remain in their current schedules and the sections to the best of our ability. We will not have the same level of balancing of schedules necessary during this semester because only 25% of the class, each class will not get to 15 students in a classroom. We should be under 10 in every single situation. So 25% of the student body attends each day, providing ample spacing for those classrooms and common areas. It provides a glide path towards the next steps of in-person. So full day, in-person, two days every other week would lead to full day, in-person, two days every week at the 50% plan we presented last week. And then ultimately, a full return when we can put this nightmare of COVID behind us. So the staged return of a hybrid overview, so November 2nd, 25% of our students return in a rotation. And then I've got there the second semester, January 4th, we would be targeting 50% of the return. The options to select hybrid or remote remain intact. Hybrid students will be divided into four groups, A, B, C, and D. They would attend for full days, two days every other week. So Group A, Monday, Tuesday. Group B, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday's all remote. The next week, Group C, Monday, Tuesday. Group D, Thursday, Friday. We would be maintaining the block schedule. We believe that that has been very beneficial, especially for our students in this, this remote period. I still emphasize that that block schedule has been valued. It's been a bit of a challenge in some regards, but I still think for our secondary students going through an eight-period school day, if we were having seven periods and lunch of 45-minute classes every day, the volume of homework that they would have to manage outside of the school day, that the stress that we're hearing about from students of not being able to socialize in isolation, it would be twice that, if not more. So that the block schedule, I believe, is helping with that greatly. Teams and student schedules will remain the same for the semester. Nothing will change. We'll anticipate the start date is November 2nd, as I said. And this last point is actually a really, really important one. The base model for general education of at least 25%, it's necessary in order to layer on additional special education and targeted groups. We have to have a schedule for the special education groups and the additional, or the groups that need additional support for it to work. We can't, we don't, we can't just have, bring in students that need additional support and have them attend their classes here as needed. That structure is necessary in order for those students to want to attend, to feel welcomed to attend, which is a really important component from the social, emotional side of things. Plus it allows for, the 25% allows for the more frequent, the frequency of their attendance, as you'll see a little bit later, for them to be in the building more often than their every other week attendance rate. All right, so instruction. What will instruction look like? This will be an important slide as well. So team makeup for students, the middle school will remain the same, including both in-person and remote students. Remote students will zoom into live classes. The instructional models will vary per the judgment of the teachers. Now what that means is there are a number of different approaches that teachers could take to breaking down a class period and how they could teach. And we say per judgment of teachers because teaching in this, you know, they're right in some of the comments that we heard. This is not an easy style in terms of how to teach, teaching kids online, teaching kids in person. And the important component here is the primary audience is the remote student. And I want to be clear about that. The primary audience for the teacher is going to be the students in the remote audience. The students that are in the room will have the benefit of being physically in the room, but the teacher is going to be teaching to the remote students. Now, it's an hour and a half class period. The student that are in the room has the benefit of being physically there, following a schedule, which is going to not only help them in terms of from social, emotional, just getting in the building, following a routine, getting out of the house. It's a huge help. But then also, the teacher's not lecturing for an hour and a half. They're not completely, they're not just talking for an hour and a half. They are, they're engaged in a lesson for the day. And then there's a number of different options where this blended and rotational model come in that we've presented to teachers, a couple of different options for them. Internal support is ready to support them where they are, allowing them a choice to find the model that best fits them and their level of comfort and where they feel they are in terms of their instructional level. And it will remain that base model for the majority of students at a given time. So that teacher will teach to the whole group and then can break it down into smaller groups and address while the students that are remote are working on an activity or leave the Zoom and go work on something. The teacher has dedicated time for the students that are in the classroom. They can advance their learning, check in with them just as people and connect with them as people or help them with any missing assignment, fill in gaps of something that they don't know, work with them as a small group on the activity, and they're able to do so in smaller numbers. So, but I do want to be sure that we're clear that, you know, the instructional focus is that of the remote environment. That's where the majority of students will be. And that's how this 25% works. But there is a huge benefit, obviously, to students just being in the building and it's a step in the right direction. At the semester, we will re-section all of our courses and add remote-only sections wherever possible. Meaning, you know, we've got, you know, 20 plus, maybe more than that, sections of US history, for example. We can dedicate specific sections for remote-only sections. And our remote students would then revert back to what they're experiencing right now and not have to zoom into the live classroom if they select remote. And then the teacher will be managing the students that are in-person and then the students that are zooming at home that are on the A and B differing schedules. All right, so now onto the targeted groups. So the students who are in direct instruction classes, direct instruction are our special education class, some of our special education classes. They will attend two full days every week. So the other students are attending two days every other week. Our direct instruction classes, students will be able to attend every single week for two full days. So that more frequent rotation than general ed students. Students that are in co-taught classes will be identified based on need to potentially attend additional days. Not all of the students that are in co-taught classes are necessarily in need of attending every single week, but that option can be available and can be determined based on recommendation of the teacher and the IEP team as necessary. But the option does exist. And then groups of students who could also benefit from heightened in-person learning will be identified to attend additional days. They're struggling academically. Students that have remote attendance concerns, that have been MIA during this process. They've been disengaged. Students needing intervention. Our English language learners, students that maybe our counselors and social workers have been in most contact with that just need that human interaction on a more regular basis to bring them in the building. So we actually envision our daily attendance to be a little closer to a third of the student population rather than 25% of the student population, which, you know, we're very excited about welcoming our students back. Schools will identify them based on a series of criteria that's in the works. You know, we only had a handful of days to pull this part of the process together in terms of how we would target those groups. I've asked the principals to connect with teachers in the building and form a couple of small committees to develop how they'd like that to look and bring that back to me in the next week or so so we can ensure that that process is tight before we welcome students back. So those students can be identified and we can hit the ground running before November 2nd. So we expect that to be fully ready to roll long before we get to November 2nd. So here's a visual, for the more visual learners of what that could look like. If you're in Group A, B, C, and D. And when, you know, it's not your day to attend school, you would just be zooming in to the same classroom as if you are in a remote setting right now. And then again, Wednesday, the secondary is shifting to all students being remote Wednesday. So we will be aligned district-wide, Wednesday being the day that we are remote to try and help our families out just in terms of K-12 being remote on the same day in case there are older siblings that need to support their younger sibling. All right, so what to expect? This is another slide that was in last week's presentation. But again, anticipating a larger audience tonight, I wanted to be sure we addressed this. You know, this will not be, this is not going to be school as usual. It's not going to be school that it was in 2019. I think we've covered that. I think that everybody understands that. But I just want to be sure that, you know, we heard a lot in our comments. Everyone's, you know, yearning for the social interaction. We're all missing that part of our lives, I think, especially at school. And it's just, it's not going to, we're not going to be able to replicate that when we come back. We're still going to be the same teachers and educators that they've known and loved. We're going to take care of your kids. We're going to love your kids. We're going to take really, you know, we're excited to have them back. But it's not going to be, you know, school as usual. When students arrive at school in the middle school, they'll report to the gym in the cafeteria or the LRC. They'll sit and hang out. They will be spaced out. They'll be able to socialize with people that are around them, but they won't be able to congregate. Same thing at the high school. Students who drive will be remaining in their cars until 7:10. And then car riders and bus riders who arrive before that will go to the gym and of course, will be spaced out, can socialize, but will not be able to congregate. Passing periods will shift down from 10 to five minutes. And it really is about getting from point A to point B and not congregating in the hallways to ensure that it's really just about getting from where you're coming from to where you're going. And then even though they'll only have 25 to, you know, 33% or so of our students in the building, we're going to stagger dismissal to ensure that we minimize the volume of, it's not going to be mass exodus like we're, like the high school or middle schools were used to where the bell rings and everyone just exits the building. And then again, masks will be required. I covered this in great detail last week, but that's an expectation and we're going to be very serious about that. We don't, you know, we want this to be as positive an experience as it can be. Our students that, I don't believe this is going to be an issue for our students at all. Every school that I've spoken to about their transition into the building have reported that the students have handled this wonderfully and they have not had a single mask issue. I expect that we're going to have a similar situation. Our students are, I believe they're eager to be back and they're going to be wonderful and comply with our requests. But if they're unwilling to comply with wearing a mask, then remote learning will be the option for them. So lunch, another slide from last week. IDPH mandates that 50 people is the maximum in a given space for lunch and six feet of separation is required while eating lunch. We have plexiglass dividers in the cafeteria. Lunch will be eaten in the cafeteria. Given now we've shrunk the number of students in the building, I don't believe that we'll be needing the additional spaces. To the extent that we did before at the high school, the likelihood of the gym will still be necessary, but the middle schools will probably be able to manage everyone in the cafeteria with the normal cafeteria tables, I'm thinking, and not have to go the desk route. Lunch distribution, again, we'll handle that a little bit differently. But we'll be expedited and want to be sure that students are getting a hot lunch. Mr. Reed is committed to the hot lunch and not the cold prepackaged lunch that one of our commentators had mentioned earlier. We're going to be sure that, you know, lunches are high quality and nutritious. But some considerations to keep in mind, you know, quarantines of students and staff are possible. And it could have large effects in our ability to maintain the model. If quarantines are necessary, we, you know, we'll obviously, this model actually allows for the 10 days of absence in between scheduled times to come back. So students that are scheduled on the A, B, C, or D group would have plenty of time between their scheduled times in the building where this might actually help the quarantine process. We'll schedule siblings with the same school, within the same school to be on the same days together. Due to scheduling difficulties, we do ask respectfully that no request be made to choosing a particular group. You know, we have to get this done and get our groups made as quickly as possible so we can get this to transportation. We, given that we delayed our process by a week, we are committed to trying, to making the November 2nd date not get pushed back and we want to be sure that we meet that. So we can't, we can't slow things down by managing a bunch of requests. We have to get our splits to transportation so that those routes can be built as quickly as possible. If you have a request to switch from hybrid to remote at any point, that can be accommodated by contacting the building administrator. And if anyone requests to go from remote and come to the building a hybrid, that request will be reviewed by the building administrator and accommodated if possible at the next grading period. But both of those requests need to go to the building level. So then to review the process and timeline, tomorrow, six through 12 families will receive the opt-in form to select either hybrid or remote, as well as if transportation is needed. Again, a reminder, transportation is available to all. 50 students per bus. 50 students per bus is the maximum capacity. If transportation is able to be provided, we would encourage you to do so, but if that is necessary, we're happy to provide it. Selections are due by next Wednesday, the 21st, because we're trying to turn around those those transportation requests as quickly as possible and are hoping to get them back to you early in the week of October 26th so that we can, you can make any necessary plans and know what your routes are. The target start date is still November 2nd, and then all aspects, again, are dependent upon our health metrics remaining in a favorable place for us. We'll, we'll, of course, communicate as early as possible and give you plenty of time to make any accommodations necessary should we have to go backwards. On that note, I, you know, while I certainly hope that doesn't have to happen, I would encourage everyone to have a plan for, you know, for for how that would impact you if it has to happen and not to be caught, you know, not to be caught flat-footed should that should that occur. You know, our goal, of course, is is to have our our transportation information ready for you by the 26th, but you'll see how quick of a turnaround that is, and it may be a day or two later than that, but we'll do the very best we can. So some additional measures, the student health certification is still in place. As of now, although the form is completed monthly, the agreement parents are making is that you'll be checking your students' symptoms daily, and if they have any symptoms, you will not, you will not send them. Violations for this will be taken seriously. You'll be relegated to remote learning. Please take my non, my attendance at this meeting as an example of this. You know, no one in my family has tested positive for COVID, but a head cold forced me to not be able to check yes on or not check no on our our daily health screen for one of my children, and we had to to get a COVID test in order to prove that it wasn't that, but because I don't have that proof, I can't be physically on-site. So that's, you know, so please take this seriously because because we are. We want to be sure that that safety is doing, everyone's doing their part to keep our buildings open. But the fall head colds, as the weather, weather changes, unfortunately, it forces us to, we have to respond in a safe manner. Sitting charts will be used in classrooms and cafeterias and on buses just to expedite the contact tracing process. They won't be, we won't be necessarily telling your children where to sit, but we'll be, you know, acknowledging where people are sitting so we can, but that'll be handled with a building basis. And the nurses are fantastic nurses. They work so great with the Department of Health, and they'll be contact tracing in terms of to ensure that everyone is safe and ready to be able to be in the building. So now on to that special ed update. I've only got a couple more slides, and I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have and let the discussion ensue. Families of students in self-contained classrooms, they do not need to fill out an opt-in form. Again, special ed families in a self-contained classroom do not need to fill out an opt-in form. You're already in the in the buildings. They will be eligible for expanded attendance and will receive their own communication from their case managers very soon. That information will be coming out next week to you, so continue planning and moving forward in your minds as you're currently doing. Elementary special education, starting Monday, all elementary students in co-taught classrooms and instructional classrooms will have in-person learning opportunities four days a week. And then starting the second, elementary students in self-contained classrooms will be operating five days a week with a slightly different schedule. The shift to five days a week, 8:30 to 1:25 each day with a slightly different schedule for Martin, as those of you that attend Martin and Jessica know, Martin has a slightly different schedule to accommodate the transportation needs on that campus. And then on, starting November 2nd, all early childhood, our preschool, the families in self-contained classrooms will be able to come in four days a week. So we're very excited about expanding our self-contained opportunities for for our families. This has been a part of our plan, and we're excited to be here now and offer those opportunities for additional in-person learning for our self-contained classes. At the secondary level, starting October 26th, middle school and high school self-contained classrooms and the light program will have in-person learning opportunities for four full days each week. And then starting on November 2nd, all secondary students in instructional classrooms will have in-person learning for two days a week, every week. So they will have additional learning opportunities beyond their 25%. So every single week, the instructional classes will be in, which we're excited to offer those additional learning opportunities for some of our neediest students. With that, I am happy to take any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Rowe, for this presentation. First, I mean, just a brief, you know, while we're back here, to be honest, there was a bit of a clotting from what had been presented, not that we didn't trust in that plan, but we, as a board, had kind of instructed our administration to really move forward with a more aggressive plan that they had presented the prior Thursday. We, you know, listened to some of the pushback that we were getting, and just through discussion, we knew the administration had, on their own, had been more in favor of possibly this this plan that they had kind of, you know, less aggressive, getting back in, doing it a little softer. So we, we wanted to give them the opportunity to actually present it to the public and to us tonight. So, you know, we're just trying to weigh everything as thoughtfully and as carefully as you can. You've got to understand, it's difficult. School board just meets in these meetings. We can't meet outside these meetings. We really can't discuss too much outside. So everything you're seeing, we're seeing for the, you know, pretty much the first time also and having to evaluate it on the fly. And so as we're listening to everything, you know, we have to, you know, kind of take everything in and make some hard hard decisions in regards to this as far as how we want to, you know, direct our administration to move forward. So that's why we're here tonight, is to kind of give this a second, second go-around here, an alternative plan to see what what the, you know, the best course of action to go forward with. So I'm going to, I'm going to, Paul, you're always last, and I'm sorry, I'm going to make you go first today as far as questions. I know you probably weren't prepared for that, but you get seated all the time.
So, no, having understood the thought that went into this before, I understand the rationale for shifting to 25% in this manner. I'm glad to see this because it allows people to kind of shift back into a different routine, albeit it's for a short period of time. I had a conversation with a parent earlier today where we talked about many things. We spoke for about 50 minutes, but one of the things that I conveyed was my first experience going back to March and walking into a grocery store and not knowing what to expect as far as interaction with people and walking out the door, kind of holding my breath because I didn't, didn't know breathing and, not breathing, but just circumstance. And I think this kind of addresses that hesitation that I had and just kind of easing things in. I don't, I'm glad to see that this is not necessarily a a pull the Band-Aid off and get kids back into school. There have been, all at once necessarily, there have been some public comments about doing exactly that and more so. I think it's important for those people to understand, and Scott, you can correct me if I'm wrong, under the current guidelines from the state, we can't have all 100% participation in schools no matter what, correct?
That's correct, Paul.
So, so there's no way we could, we could do that even if we wanted to. But I think that that's important for the community to understand that we still have to play by by the rules that are are being given to us. Also, in that conversation, one of the things that was...
Well, I guess I should, let me clarify, let me clarify that, Mr. Troy.
Okay.
If we chose to do that, we would be, we would be ignoring the Illinois Department of Public Health guidelines and be throwing them completely out the window, and there are sanctions that the governor's office has put in place for schools to to have to follow. If, if, if that were, if that were the case, it would start with a a letter that we would have to send the community, a very embarrassing letter to basically state, we're not following IDPH guidelines, and we've been caught by the state of Illinois as step one. And then ultimately, I mean, ISB always has the ability to impose further sanctions for us not following some of their mandates. It's just, it's bad practice. So technically, could we fully open? I guess we could. There are, it would be, it would be a, an ill-advised thing for us to do and would be, it would not be a, well, safety for one thing, but it would just be irresponsible in terms of how we we conduct ourselves with our, you know, from, let alone sanctions from the state to our, how we are as leaders in the community. It would just would not be a smart move. But technically, yeah, we could welcome everybody back. It would just wouldn't be the right thing to do.
Thank you. The other thing is, this particular parent said that there's some frustration about transparency, and that transparency is more still in in how we've arrived at, how we've arrived to where we're at today. And I know that the timeline that you presented last time and the timeline that appears in our website actually, I think, goes a long way to try and address those, those questions. So this is, to me, this is something that has been discussed, maybe not publicly, but I want the public to know that that our administration has gone to great lengths to look at the minutia and the details involved in opening up the schools. It is not simply an opportunity to to say, okay, we're going to fling open the doors and we're going to bring kids back. There's a lot of details here from for scheduling that needs to be looked at to make sure that, like you revealed last week, that we have the space, the capacity to do this, that there is a lot of moving pieces here. And and it's not a haphazard or reckless decision to to just say we're going to do this. And I credit all the people involved in looking at this from lens number one through lens number two and three and four, and making sure that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed in getting to whatever the decision is. There's a lot of work here that goes on behind the scenes, and it really is a shame that the people aren't given the credit for it or appreciation for it, and I wanted to express that appreciation publicly. I get the the emails, just like everybody does from the board. I appreciate that people are advocating for their children, and I appreciate the emotion that goes into that advocacy. Please don't think that it's lost on us. It's not lost on me. I read them, and I take every one of those to heart. And the, in dialoguing with different parents, the the mental image that I convey to people is is going back to my childhood in gym class, when we had the giant parachute and you have all the kids that are trying to pull that thing as tightly as they can, and some kids are pulling in one, pulling in one direction more than others. We're trying to attain a delicate balance here that addresses the needs of the kids, the administration, I'm sorry, and the teachers and our staff to make sure that people are safe, that people can go back to school as much as they can, and and we'll get there. We'll get there more so, and we need the cooperation of everybody to make sure that we get there all together in one piece. So I'm sorry, I don't have many questions. It's more of a commentary.
It's okay.
Just wanted to kind of get that off my chest.
Perfectly fine. John?
Yeah, I don't have that many questions either, is the fact that, you know, we went from 50 to 25%, I think, kind of, you know, thought that that's where this would go. You know, I, I guess my only, my only comment would be, you know, I, I think we want to do this safely, we want to do it smartly, and I think you also got to think about the kids. I have three small kids in the district, and just the excitement that they are returning in person for a little bit enormously next week excites me. And even though this is a small step, we got to realize that this is happening November 2nd, and, you know, the second semester is coming soon that we will start to get even further in the in-person. So I appreciate Scott or Dr. Rowe and everybody putting this plan together. I look forward to seeing it.
Melissa? Thank you. I do have a couple of questions, but I just, I wanted to kind of reiterate what Mr. Troy was saying about really our, the board. We really genuinely do care about what parents are saying, what teachers are saying, what the students are saying, and, you know, to us, you know, that it's a community that is succeeding at remote. These are all factors that I, that are all important. I struggle with finding who is more important than than the other, and there is no answer. Everybody is equally important. One thing that I kind of want to clear up is, there's been a lot of talk that the the board, that Dr. Rowe has painted a very dreary picture of what return to school will be like, what the day will be like. And I don't think that's the intention. I think we would be doing a disservice to the community if we weren't open and honest about the the reality that it's not going to be the same as March, and our kids can't be prepared for something less than something that's different. They just need to understand, and that's nothing that we're doing on purpose to hurt anyone. It's just what we need to live in based on these guidelines that we've been given. So I just, I wanted to say that because I know there's a lot of people that, that they just think of them on purpose, and it's not. But I do have a couple of questions that I had. One of them was about the following the guidelines, about opening, pull up if you wanted to, but... Dr. Rowe, can you speak on a little bit, without the doom and gloom, can you give an idea of what socialization will be like, you know, especially at the 6 through 12? And kind of clarify what's really in our control and what's not? What's in our control versus our guidelines, and what will socialization be like for our 6 through 12 kids?
Well, you know, Mrs. Meyer, no, I'm glad that you, I'm glad that you you made that point because I, I would echo it. It's definitely not my intention to paint a doom and gloom picture to to make people afraid of what school would be like and or to try and and push people to want to be remote. I'm trying to be just pragmatic about the reality. You know, I was a principal, people used to, people made fun of me because they said if I could recreate High School Musical, that's what I would do because that would that would be what I was envisioning. It was, like, I, I would hate to have to live in 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 the reality of what I'm, what I'm painting all the time, but I just don't want people to be caught off guard. But when I say that we're, it's still going to care for your child and and be excited to see your kids every single day when they come in, that excitement's still going to be there because I can tell you that, you know, the, our teachers are extremely excited to see kids back in the building, and I think we're going to, we're going to see a, a, like a, an exhale whenever we get kids back in the building at the elementary next week, and we're going to get a, a feeling of relief of there's some feeling of normalcy back because, you know, those little people are why we're here. But to answer your question of what what socialization is going to be like, it's difficult for me to answer that. I'm making a prediction because I haven't, I haven't walked in those hallways. I've not lived those, that life yet. But I, you know, knowing teenagers and knowing middle schoolers, I, I expect them to continue to do what they do. But knowing Huntley kids, I expect them to do their best to comply with what we're asking them to do, and maybe, you know, the hugs that happen in the hallway from when our our middle school and high school kids see each other, I hope that those kind of subside and they they stand, walk, walk through the hallway and and just carry on a conversation from class to class, and it's not, you know, standing, huddling in the, in the corner, talking together that way. You know, I think kids are going to find ways to continue to socialize. We're social beings. It's what we do. But I think that, you know, I just hope that they, that they do it in a, in an intelligent way. I've seen my, my own children follow, follow our request, and they wear their masks responsibly when we go out in public, and they're able to to talk to to their friends and one another and us when we're out and about just fine. So it's not going to be, you know, some, some drab institutional environment where no one can enjoy themselves, but it's not going to be the same as it always was. I guess that's the ultimate message. It's not going to be the same, but it's not going to be an awful environment that's not loving and caring for kids at all.
Thank you for that. My next question is guessing if you... Um, my next question is, uh, guessing if you could maybe clarify for, and I, I'm kinda jumping forward maybe to second semester, could you just shed a little bit of light and clarify some of the challenges, uh, especially at the high school with splitting out, you know, some parents are like, well, just give a remote teacher to the remote kid and a, you know, hybrid or in-person teacher to the in-person kid. He, you know, you talked about US history has multiple sections that go in there, can you shed a little bit of light into some other areas where it might be difficult?
Sure, sure, absolutely. So, so at, at, at the, at the high school level, we, we call them singletons. And when you section classes, let, let's, let's pick an, an example of a singleton like Mr. Stires came and spoke last, last week. Mr. Stires teaches, you know, multi-variable calculus, it's a, it's a beyond AP type of a course. Um, he's, there's only one, one section of the class. Um, Mr. Brown, he came and, you know, spoke last week, there's one section of, of our newspaper. Um, there are a number of electives that operate in that, in that capacity where there's only one section that's offered. Um, and if that's the case, then there's only one section and one teacher that can offer it, we can't create a, a remote section if a student is in that, in that classroom. Um, however, if there's multiple sections, um, then we can. It just depends on, are there enough students that are remote to justify creating a remote section and then putting all the students that are in person together in the leftover sections and balancing that out to have appropriate class sizes to still maintain the, the splits? Um, because that changed then dominoes across those students, the remainder of their schedules. So that's, the, the high school schedule puzzle is an absolute monster, um, and that's why, you know, there, there's a lot of work to be done between now and January, um, but it can be done, it's just that we won't be able to accommodate every single section as remote only, um, in some of those special elective ones. But the, the majority of them, we, we should be able to, cause most classes, there are multiple sections, it just depends on the number of students that are remote and how those numbers balance out. It's, it's completely a numbers game. The middle school, for example, we don't, we don't have remote, like singleton classes like that, um, and what the middle school will look like is we would have, um, remote sections on the middle school team. So, uh, the student's schedules may change on, on, within their team, but the five teachers on each team, um, the literacy teacher may change, but the math teacher who teaches, you know, five classes in a day may have two sections of the day that would be remote and three sections that are be in person, and we just have to build the schedule to accommodate, um, the way that would work. So that teacher would have some in-person and some remote sections, but, um, you know, for those remote students, it's definitely better to live in that remote environment than to zoom into the classroom and never have to, never have the opportunity to come in because they elected to be remote.
Thank you. Um, another question that I have, um, late last week, KISB, the Illinois State Board of Education, had sent out something that, that talked about, um, schools experiencing a teacher or sub shortage, where teachers requested to work remotely, may now move volunteers to shepherd, to shepherd classrooms under the supervision of a remote teacher if a licensed individual is present in the school building. Uh, is, how is that affecting our district?
Uh, good question. I'm actually gonna kick that over and let Mr., or actually, excuse me, let Dr. Zier address that, we were just discussing that, uh, this week.
Yeah, we've actually started looking into that, um, as the board knows, we do have a strong, um, volunteer group out there, um, that comes into our buildings and, um, we have reached out, um, to those folks to see if they'd be interested, um, in such positions. So, uh, what we are finding out, um, some of our, uh, individuals who have volunteered for us in the past, um, not comfortable, uh, at this point, coming into the setting, uh, which we understand, um, some of them have, uh, children of their own, uh, in the district and, um, are willing to help out when they can, um, when their students are, um, in class, um, obviously with the, the AB going on. So, uh, we have looked into that, um, we're looking to bring, um, a few of those folks on and essentially to have them stationed, um, at our buildings, um, and spread them out as much as we can. Uh, so we're still receiving responses on that right now. But, um, just as everyone is experiencing, um, with their, you know, work and having their children at home, um, our volunteers that are out there, our subs that are out there, um, are in the same boat. So, uh, we've looked into it and, um, have invited people, um, into that role.
Excellent, thank you. I'll leave some questions, because I think I'm stealing all of the questions.
No, you can write them down.
I don't want to steal all your questions.
I don't have many.
Kevin, that was it. Okay. Um, I just, my reaction to the, to this plan tonight is I was comfortable with what was presented last week frankly, but then the, the feedback, um, kinda cried for a compromise for various reasons, and I think what this plan does is kind of allows us to learn our way through that continuum of zero to a hundred, um, and then stating the obvious, the choice of remote only is still there and, uh, you know, that can always be made, and we're making our way to attendance and, you know, kinda the thoughts that came to my mind when I hear about the transparency, it's kinda pretty simple criteria, how do we, uh, manage our way through the, through the pandemic while creating in-person opportunity? And that comes down to wearing a mask, washing your hands and keeping spacing. So I think what, you know, moving down the twenty-five percent does nicely is it, you know, mathematically it increases the spacing, allows us to learn what works and what doesn't, um, and get better at it so we can, uh, get back to normal sooner. So, in a nutshell, that's my reaction, so I really, uh, you know, don't have much else to say except maybe a couple of just more technical questions around, um, just to, to talk about seating charts. I wasn't quite clear on what that meant and how that would be executed, so Dr. Rowe, if you could expand on what, and how the, the vision for that is?
Sure. Um, well, the seating charts have, uh, have more to do with, with just documenting who's sitting where in some of our larger spaces. Um, well, teachers keep seating charts in their classrooms now, for the most part, will, will need them to do it, but it's about contact tracing. So, if, if it, like in a cafeteria, for instance, um, the, the administration is gonna need to know who is sitting where, so that way if we have a positive case that need to go through the contact tracing, um, and, and if, if a quarantine is necessary, we just can quickly, uh, determine who is sitting near whom and can pull those students in to ask them the, the contact tracing question. Um, it, it, it reduces the amount of time of, of pulling cameras and trying to identify students and we can, can just track students down and ask them the questions that they need to ask, so that way, uh, we can limit the spread of, uh, of the virus that way.
And is that dynamic in a sense, in that it changes each day, or, I mean, I guess that's what I wasn't clear about, do I, like, would I be?
Oh, I don't, I would assume on a, I was, I, I'm, I'm anticipating and, and Ms. Lombard, please correct me if I'm wrong, but once the student is on the, on the bus, that is gonna be their daily spot on the bus, um, just because that's gonna be necessary to, to ensure that the bus driver knows who's where, um, and I, I assume it's gonna be the same thing in the cafeteria, they're gonna need to know, this is gonna be your spot each day in the cafeteria, so that way, if a contact tracing is necessary, we can track that down. Um, but that's gonna be up to each building, they'll have a process in order to, of how they're gonna follow, how follow that, that has not been dictated from our office, uh, to each building.
So I would have a permanent seat at lunch and a permanent seat on the bus?
Yeah, we envision that, again, um, each of the three buildings will kinda do that, but probably that first day, so it's not, you know, we want them to have some socialization and, and whatnot and, um, with who's there, so they'll select their seat and from there we'll kinda write that down instead of me saying, hey, you're sitting here, you're sitting here, you're sitting there, they can kinda select where they would like to, to sit, is kinda what we had, um, talked about and envisioned, uh, with the principals earlier. Um, on transportation, um, definitely some of those seats are going to be, you're sitting with your family member, right? So first and foremost, and then, um, after that, after family are there, if they're kinda two to a seat or, um, one to a seat, depending on the, how many are on that bus, um, for the most part, the driver will have that kinda pre-arranged and set because they'll know, you know, who's family and whatnot, so.
A lot of pressure on that first day to get the, the right seat.
Yeah, kinda.
And then it's, that's right. Um, well, I think it's a better seat up here, so. Um, the question around enforcement, I just wanted to get a, you know, maybe some latest thoughts on, you know, how would we, you know, how aggressive we would get on enforcement of masks, enforcement of, uh, medical disclosure or sign-off and, and violations and such and kinda, what does that, like, what does that enforcement cycle look like and how, how stern can we be?
Uh, well, as I shared last week, our, our, we would handle middle school and high school slightly differently, but, uh, and Ms. Lombard, if you've had additional conversations with our principals, please, please correct me, but I believe at the high school, our plan is that a, um, you know, a, a teacher, uh, addresses a student for, for violation not wearing their mask, and, uh, and then that is followed up with a referral, and the referral is just a documentation, uh, that the interaction took place and that helps the dean ensure that they, they can, they, they know, when they, when they see a student, they, they can, they can see what the interactions have, have occurred in the past. Um, and then if another, if then a second interaction occurs, the dean can see it's the second time that student has had a failure to comply with the mask mandate, uh, and that, that would be a contact with the parent, uh, and to let the parent know that a third violation would be, uh, removal from the learning environment and they would be relegated to, uh, to remote for a duration of, I believe we settled on two weeks. Um, and following that two-week period, if another, uh, issue of, of failure to comply with mask, uh, wearing the mask, it would be relegated for the remainder of the semester. Uh, again, we haven't seen, I have not heard of a school that's had this kind of an issue, I think it's one of those, um, I think it's one of those issues that I think we're, we're nervous about something that has yet to show itself and I don't anticipate it's going to be a problem because I believe our students want to be here and are going to do everything they can to, they're, they're, we typically have really great kids, I don't really expect that to be a problem, but, um, we wanna be sure that's in place so that, um, if that failure to comply is in place and it's, it's, it's overt, that we have a, a process in place. And in terms of, um, not complying with, with safety standards, uh, we, we just, we can't have any tolerance for someone coming to school with, uh, just blatantly ignoring the safety si, uh, of the symptoms. And if someone is waiting for results of a COVID test or clearly has symptoms and, and they've come to school, um, they're, they're, they're putting other people's health at risk and we just, we aren't gonna have tolerance for that.
And it, um, Dr. Rowe, those are exactly, um, the discussions we've had with the middle school administration, um, how they kinda track, that'll look a little bit different at the, the three buildings, um, a lot of that'll probably go right into log entries in power schools, so you can immediately look up if I'm the administrator, the dean, um, on there to, so I, I know that it's Julie's second offense or something like that to, to follow in those, so, um, definitely, uh, tracking of that, that component will be there. And the other, um, component we wanna make sure is those first days that kids are there for their hybrid day, um, obviously, we haven't had that part, um, uh, at the beginning of school years, that, that classes do go over, here are the expectations, any changes that were in handbooks, this isn't specified exactly, um, um, out masks in the handbooks, we talked about CDC guidelines, but kinda the, what consequence would be in there, um, because it is kinda, it falls into a variety of different levels. Uh, level four is kinda the health and safety, well, um, as Dr. Rowe talked about, if you're kinda blatantly, um, unknowingly violating the, um, the self-certification, that, that jumps you right down to a four. If it's your mask keeps falling off because it's not tight enough, okay, that's a, a level one, we're giving you a kinda that warning component, so it's not really spelled out specifically, but those expectations will be clearly given to the students and families, you know, those first, um, days that they are in for hybrid, so that they know what to expect and, and why it's so important and really hoping to build that culture of, we want you here, you want to be here, here's what we need for you to do to be able to, you know, continue to have the schools open, we all need to do our parts together.
Right, and when I think about that, um, I don't know what the right term for it, but showing up with symptoms, you know, obvious, it's, my, my first inclination is say, how do you get as close to zero tolerance as you possibly can? But then as a practical matter, there's a, you know, the devil's in the detail than how you determine that, if you are symptom-free but, but asymptomatic carrier, you're never gonna know if you're, you know, in, in between.
Correct, well, never, yeah. Yeah, we're never gonna be able to catch every, you know, piece of that, um, even with all the screening, the temperature checks, there are people that have, like you said, completely asymptomatic. Um, and so this is kinda just that step in, if, if I'm the parent who, you know, constantly sends my child in with these symptoms and then is getting the nurse, you know, frequent phone call back of, hey, you know, Jessica has such and such, such and such, okay, this is a continual, um, habit that's happening, we're gonna have to do that. But if we do have someone, um, that, uh, tests positive, um, and then we see, we, you know, we get that information from the health department and then from the parents, and if it shows, hey, you were tested two days ago and you've been in school those days, even after you went, so that's a blatant safety, you know, um, yeah, and we would go ahead right away.
We would have the ability to know that, that they had, that been tested?
Um, I, I believe we do see, you know, we, we send the, the information to the, you know, the health department and all of that, and then in that contact tracing where they're, they're asking those, you know, the questions, and so, when did symptoms start? I told Julie my symptoms started, you know, three days ago and I've been here every day, well, you knew that, but you were still here and then you went to get tested. So, um, a lot of that is the, the questioning through that, um, contact tracing and whatnot, that we would be able to get that information. Will we catch everyone? You know, no, but if we were to find out something like that is a very blatant safety, um, violation, we would definitely want to, to immediately back that up.
Be kind of a one-and-done philosophy then, if I show up? I mean, just hypothetically, obviously fever, ice, snow.
Yeah, hypothetically, Kevin, yes, that's our thinking. We don't want this to turn into, uh, you know, this punitive school district is against kids kind of a thing, that's not our mentality at all, but when it comes to safety of dealing with this, ne, worldwide crisis, we, we can't, we can't play around with, um, blatant disregard for other people's health.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I actually, I agree with you, Mr. Dantley, I, I originally liked the, uh, plan that we were presented last week, but this one, uh, gives us a chance to kinda dip our toes in the water and, and try it out and sell just for the rest of the semester and then we can make our tweaks and then if the metrics allow, we can enhance it for next semester, so I'm comfortable with that. And I, and I was glad to hear, Dr. Rowe, that did, um, you clarified with our remote, um, students that, that's gonna be the focus, uh, teaching to those remote students, because one of my concerns was that when we go back, that the kids that have chosen to stay remote are gonna kinda be forgotten in the shuffle, and so I'm glad to hear that, um, kind of that's intact. So my question is, since we're doing the, the twenty-five percent, you know, the support group, is it possible to, uh, screen our students in, at the building, in the building when they come in? Because the numbers are lower, I know we, I know we, uh, produce information daily and it's turned in monthly by our parents, but we're doing the day's screeners with our teachers every day, is there any way we can do a daily screener, uh, in the building with the students because the numbers are, are lower now?
We have the capacity to, yes, of course. Uh, but our parents are checking their, their, their symptoms every single day before they come in, that's what we're asking them to do with the monthly screener. Um, you know, that, that's the agreement that we're making with them, um, I, I don't, I don't see that it's, that it's any different, but we do have the capacity to, to, to accomplish that, yeah, absolutely.
Hey, so, when you say that, Leslie, and, and what, what exactly would be done? I mean, I, I, I'm actually thinking you're on the right track here, cause there's lesser crowds coming in. Are you talking about like temperature checks, or what are you talking about?
I think typically, yeah, just the temperature check, you know, you got those, I, every time I, I work, I, I mean, the county government.
Yeah, I get, I get shot, I get shot every time I'm walking through.
Yeah, so I, you know, you spend different minutes, things you go in and they have to hold your, it's a two-second thing.
Right. I happen, I happen to think it's the least effective of all the splits, but.
I don't know how people can do that, it's amazing they have these temperature like that, but, um.
But I, if, if, here's what I would tell you, if, I, I, if you listen to our teachers at the last meeting, that was one of their bigger concerns is how come we're having this certified daily. we're having to certify daily? Why aren't the kids who are coming in? And I, I mean, I don't know. I don't know if that possibly alleviates some of those concerns that we are going ahead and doing quick forehead temperature checks as they're walking in.
I, I, I don't want to have anything else to our teachers.
I, I, well, I'm not looking for, I don't know if I'm looking for our teachers to.
I don't know if our teachers need to do that, but I, I, and I don't know. I don't know the, the details of how it works.
Let me, let me share. We, this, this is something that through our, you know, ongoing collaboration with, with, with our teachers, this is something we've been talking about for some time. And we've modeled out a couple of options that, that we've been looking at for, for a little while as, as just to kind of have in the background if, if we chose to go this route. So we have a couple of, a couple of things we've been looking at. I will say, there's no system that's perfect. You know, you look at what we've experienced with some of our athletic teams. IHSA has mandated a temperature check and daily screener. And we still had positive cases that's quarantined our basketball team and our football team that have gone through that daily screener. It, it, it's going to happen. What we're doing with the monthly screener is essentially, it's, it's, it's the same thing. We're just adding a step as they come into the building. That said, I agree with you. It's, it's, it's relieving some of the, the stress and anxiety of our teachers and some of our community members that have reached out about that. So we've modeled out some of our, some of the options that exist and can certainly implement that. It will not be in place on Monday for our elementary students, but it could be something that we could turn around pretty quickly.
Yeah, and I, again, not that I'm not looking to have consistency, but I was probably thinking more along the six, six through 12 group. And knowing that it's, you know, a quarter of them and it's not even a quarter of them because X amount, 25% of them will stay remote. So you're just dealing with lower numbers. I don't know how practical it is at the elementary level to conduct that stuff at the levels they're coming in. Yeah, but I mean, in a minute, I guess what I would say at a minimum is definitely should explore whether that's feasible or not to do that, that it's the six through 12 range.
Right. I'd love to explore that.
Well, thank you not loud too though. Is there, is there value to almost like a random check of just make it pulling a number out of the air? You know, 20% of the population in a given day. So then you're 20% of 25%. So the, the, the physical action isn't burdensome, as burdensome, but you're getting the message across that you will be checked. So when, you know, my hypothetical person comes in not with 105, but maybe 101, they may be, you know, use their quotes, caught by a random temperature check.
What about the kid that's not caught?
Well, yeah, but I mean, not just balancing the logistical burden versus the, the desired effect is.
I guess what I, yeah, what I would tell you is they have to figure out logistically if that's feasible. If it doesn't, doesn't take a half an hour to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
If it took five or 10 minutes as part of the start of the day, maybe that's fine. But it, it, it's not going to work if it's a half an hour.
Right. I, I don't want to, I don't want to add any burden, but it takes one second to, you know, you know, every check. Just a thought.
Well, I, I bet you signed up for the position. And, but, but look at it numerically. So you're looking at it from a percentage standpoint. I'm rounding here, but figure there's 2,800, 3,000 kids in the high school. 25% of those are going to be in there. So that's 750 kids, 700, 700 kids. So you're, if you're screening 20% of that, you're looking at 150 kids. If you're going to screen all, all 750 kids that come in on a daily basis, you, you've got to be able to process those 750 kids quickly to get them moved onward. So that's, that's numerically.
Yeah, I mean, numerically, it's, it's going to be closer to 500 kids because you're going to have, like you said, 25% of them are staying remote. So you're, you're, it's, it's, you're, you're talking the pool that's going to be coming in is probably in that 2,200 range. So it's a quarter of 2,200. So it's just like 550.
Okay.
That's what you're talking about.
But still, you've still got to process those hundreds of kids.
No, 550 is still a lot of kids. No doubt about it. So. That's what those volunteers are for. I don't know. Get some of them doing it.
Okay, one last question. We'll move on.
Okay.
My last question is, Dr. Rowe, on the Wednesday when everybody is remote, are we doing a deep clean of classrooms on that day?
Well, each night, our custodians are doing a, the e-misting process. So a deep clean of the classrooms happens every single night in terms of, you know, Mr. Nkosi has that built into our contract with ABM that, that every night the high touch surfaces and, and the, the e-mist, e-misting process for all the places that the classrooms will have been. I mean, Mr. Altmaier, you can certainly go into detail, but there are, we would have to enhance that contract, which could be done, but it's not part of the plan because we believe our, our cleaning process is already detailed enough.
So each classroom itself is being sprayed every night?
The e-mist, the each classroom is already being, is, is being cleaned and disinfected each night.
Okay, okay. I didn't realize that. I thought they were just being kind of wiped down. Okay, that was all.
And you also, you also have to think here, the, the same group of kids is coming in on, from Monday to Tuesday. And then, right, for, at the high school, at the secondary level, the same group of kids is coming in on consecutive days. And then there's an, there's an entire 24 hour period. You know, the, early on in, in March and April, the virus was believed to live on surfaces for like four days. Since then, that's one of the areas where we've learned a whole great deal and that's not the case. After 24 hours, that, that virus is, is, is gone. So that Mr. Nkosi and team have done a lot of research there. So a deep clean on a, on a Wednesday, that's, that's, it may not be totally necessary when our normal cleaning practices and an entire 36 hours between when students are, are leaving and the next group is coming in, it's plenty of time.
Okay.
For Altmaier, maybe be able to go into more detail, but I, Mr. Nkosi had, if he were there, would tell you there's plenty of time.
You picked a bad team.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rowe.
Hey, Bill, are you, have any questions or comments?
I have one question and one concern. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
No, I'm just kidding. My question was, you know, we heard a lot of concern last week from the teachers. And I know we heard some comments tonight in the public comments from teachers. But has this revised plan been shared? And is there any overall movement on how they feel about this versus the last plan?
So this plan has been shared. We met with the secondary task force, which was made up of middle school and high school teachers and administrators on Tuesday, walked through concepts with them. And then building principals shared this widely with their, with their buildings this morning and this afternoon, actually. We didn't have a ton of time to share it as, as deeply as we did last time. I believe the union conducted another, another survey. I don't, the, the results of their survey have come back. I think someone shared it in one of the comments where it was, it was still largely not in support. I think they are largely wishing and are wanting for the, the January start. I think it has to do with starting in the mid semester. And remember, some of their main points were starting mid semester and, and, and seeing more value and waiting to the natural break. And then the instructional model being some of the, the biggest concerns of, of teaching remote while in person. And if there are, if half the students were in person, their natural focus would shift to the students that are in the room. And, and that was the, the primary focus of our conversation with the students and the, or the teachers in the task force on Tuesday was the 25% and the primary focus needing to be on the remote students. Because that's where the majority of your students are. And that's, that's why this 25% structure can work. It, it's an attempt to address that. And it is more of a, it is a, a more of an, a, I don't want to say a natural, but it's a better transition to the change. No transition in mid semester is going to be smooth. It's still going to be somewhat messy, as I said last week. But if we're, if we, if we have to make a change, this is an easier one to make. You know, and I believe we have to make a change. And therefore, this is the, the, not only the easier one to manage, but I believe the easier one for them to, to implement right now. But it's still, still going to be a challenge. You know, they've, they've been doing a great job living in this world. And although I know it's stressful and their, their lives are full of lots of anxious moments, as you heard, but they'll, they'll continue to, to do an exceptional job and we'll, we'll do our best to continue to take care of them.
And then my concern, and I just want to throw this out there. I'm not even looking for a comment, but I've heard you say, and I'm not going to quote you, but in the last three presentations about how we're really relying on the community to do what they can to take care of themselves and, you know, be a part of this and all that. And I'm, I'm concerned about that because I've been paying real particular attention to that lately and not just our community, but surrounding communities. People other than places that they're forced to wear masks are not wearing masks. I drive by a, a park on my way home every day from school and it's full of kids as if nothing's going on and, and all that kind of thing. So I just don't want us to be naive to think that we're going to get a lot of outside support until this thing hits us hard, if, if it does. So just a comment. And that's it. I'm done.
All right. Just to piggyback your observation, I, I'd say thing with the dairy mark. And, you know, 90% of the people had their masks and spied. There's a group of kids, about 12 of them, and they're all packed. Not one of them has a mask and they're all hanging all over each other and, you know. And, and that's, I, I get why there's pause from, you know, various segments and teachers of that. Nothing's safe unless we all act safely. Nothing's going to work and we're, we're going to be in a bad situation if, if we don't get, you know, compliance from as many as possible. I mean, again, once we're in our schools, we, we need complete compliance. In, in regards to, you know, just talking about the plan, I, I'll be honest, you know, the first plan you presented back in August, early August, when we were going to come back with the plan you had was, you know, that was a great plan, in my opinion. I thought you guys did a great job. You had a good plan and, and we had to back off of it for various reasons at that time. Because of some pushback from, you know, the teachers and from other factors that were going on at the time. That decision, again, with, you know, there was nobody in the county who was going back. There was a lot of things going on at the time. But that decision has definitely set us, I, I'll call it backwards in the fact that how quickly you can move forward now. I mean, that, that, that starting out, not being able to start out that way has, has put us in a, and everybody, not just us, has put us in a very defensive position as to how you got to get up and running there. And so, yeah, I liked the, as you stated, Kevin, I liked last week's plan. I would like more is better type of thing, more, more classroom time for the kids. That's what our community, the majority of our community was clamoring for. That's what we were trying to address. We heard, again, the feedback, you know, we can't let, you know, we've got to be understanding of the teachers' considerations in that matter. But, you know, I think what you're presenting today is, is like you said, it's, I think, Leslie, you said, it's more of a compromise towards getting things back. I mean, it's, this is a crawl before you walk, before you run and you showed your stages, Dr. Rowe. And it's probably, while it's, this plan, probably you'll get the same criticism you have for the elementary plan that we're starting, that it's not enough. Why, why are you going to bother? You're only doing a little bit. The issue is, we just got to get used to being in a cycle where we have some kids in our building and we're doing it as safely as possible so we know how to operate the school district under these conditions. And so it is, it, it, nothing's ideal. Again, you probably satisfy the least amount in the community because you're not satisfying anybody, really. You, you, you're just kind of, you are dipping your toe into this thing. But the reality is, you, you, you really, you just got to get the wheels in motion to be able to see how to operate, get, get our teachers to a certain comfort level. And, and, you know, again, I, I heard, I mean, we had three or four highly respected teachers, high school teachers at our last meeting that, you know, are, are longtime teachers that respect the heck out of each one of them and their comments. And I, it, it's hard to sit there and, and you hear them lobbying to just wait till the end of the semester and have a nice clean cut. And I, it, it's hard to go against that. It really is. But the, the other side of this is you, you got to start sometime. And what happens if you keep waiting? You're going to find another excuse to not do it and, you know, going forward in January. So I think what this addresses is, again, one of their main concerns, Dr. Rowe, you just talked about it. With the, I mean, it really hurt a lot of pushback on how, how am I going to teach to a remote class with kids in the classroom? That was the other big theme from the teachers who were speaking. And, and again, this is, none of it's ideal. We understand it, but this will, like you said, lessen the amount of kids in the classroom. You'll still have most of them on remote, but you'll have the opportunity. And the kids will have mostly, more importantly, the kids will have an opportunity to be, have some sense of normalcy as, as far as coming to class, getting into that routine and ultimately, you know, ultimately possibly us transitioning from this 25% to the 50% if, if semester break. So I, you know, again, while I, I, I see it's not the best and it probably satisfies the least, I still probably think it's the most prudent. And, and Dr. Rowe, what I'll ask you point blank is from an administration standpoint, and I'll ask you to ask any of your other team members to speak on it. Is this what your, you as an administration are the most comfortable with moving forward from six through 12?
Uh, yes, Mr. Quagliano, this, this would have, uh, this is, this is the, our most, this is the, this is the model that we are most comfortable with at this moment. I, I agree with some of the sentiments that our teachers shared last, last week and have shared with us and through the process that the implementation of this mid semester, I agree that we absolutely need to come back and we need to listen to the science and the metrics that are telling us now is the time to come back. But in terms of implementing any type of a plan, this is the one that we have the, the greatest chance of succeeding with and making it as smooth as possible. And then coming back in January with a larger group will be much cleaner for both our community and our children and teachers.
Okay. Right. So you're, it's, it's a helpful transition. And so the next thing I'd like you to comment, Dr. Rowe, is the, so some of our surrounding county, both McHenry and Kane have now been back for a week or two or three. So what, what, what kind of feedback are you seeing from them? I mean, I know I've talked to some people and it's, you know, it's, you know, they're, they're trying to be optimistic. I, I think for the most part, it's gone relatively well. I mean, there's, there's, I think, a few schools have had a little bit of an issue. But for the most part, I think it's been successful. And I think most of the, any of the COVID cases that have come about really haven't been documented as coming about in school. Because of the, because of the safety measures that have been put in place in the schools. So do you have any comments on that?
Uh, you're exactly, you're 100% correct. The, the, the COVID cases that schools have dealt with in our area have not been a result of school. They have been contracted outside of the school building and maybe brought into the building. And those that I've spoken with have had, have had pretty positive experiences. They are, they have shared that in the days and weeks leading up to that initial start have been some of the, the most challenging and, and some of the most stressful. So I think our elementary administrators and teachers have been feeling that, especially this week. And they would tell you that they are, they are very anxiously awaiting kids and that, that relief of having kids back in the building Monday. And I think our secondary folks are going to experience that in the next couple of weeks as we really put the finishing touches on this plan and the reality of kids coming back. But I think that everyone that I've spoken with has been very happy. Once kids got back in the building, there was a sense of relief and some semblance of normalcy having kids back in the building. And a, and a, I think the, the common theme and the message that they've been sharing with me has been, you know, teaching remote's no fun. No one, no one enjoys it. The kids don't love learning remote. We as educators don't love teaching remote. And being back in the building, it's, it's, there's different levels of stress, no matter where you are. Everyone deals with it differently. But having the kids back in the building has been. Um, but having the kids back in the building has been not only a relief, but um, you know, that that reward of why we've all gone through this, and and I think our teachers are going to experience the same thing, I know I can't wait for Monday. So that's usually my outlet, whenever I've had, whenever I'm having a terrible day, I I tell Mrs. Stock, I gotta get out of here, I'm going to a classroom, I'm gonna go read. And I go find an elementary classroom, and I just sit and listen to what's going on and read a book to them, and it it just melts it away. And I think I, I think that's, as ed- as educated, that's why we went into this business, we we enjoy being around kids and working with kids, um, and we haven't had that. Um, that in-person learning, our kids need it, but so do we, and I think that 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 reward is coming very quickly, and the the sooner it gets here, I I hope that not only are we going to uh to be, to reap that good, to reap the benefits of of having kids back in the building, but then also um, we can kinda start becoming back to being Huntley again, and Huntley Lake and the Hills in Algonquin, and back to being who we are. Because the the divisiveness that we are seeing in our community, that's not who we are. Uh, we're all, but we're all actually fighting for the same thing, we're fighting for what's best for our kids. Um, it, hearing some of the comments tonight was 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 really disheartening to hear people pointing fingers at teachers and teachers pointing fingers at parents and uh people pointing fingers at administration and board when all reality is, is we're all just trying to do what's best for our kids, we're just coming at it from different perspectives. Um, and I and I I would hope that that we can slow down a little bit once we get all of our kids back in the building in some, at some shape or form, and start listening to one another's perspectives. Because within those perspectives is is our different whys, and everyone has a why as to as to what's so important about uh whether they're choosing remote or or wanna be back, or they're nervous about their their work environment, and they're, that's very real to them. Our parents are great people, our kids are are awesome, our teachers are great people, they want to be with with our students. Um, they don't, they don't, they aren't afraid of kids, they want kids back in the building, and and no one deserves the the torment that we've been putting on one another. Um, and I think it's time that we start shifting our focus to what life can be like beyond this this crisis and and think about how we're going to reunify as a community, because we've all chosen to live here for some of the same reasons, and the unity that exists within our school district, and the school district being one of the main reasons why we're here I think is one of those those unifying factors, but we have to start listening to one another and understanding where each other's coming from instead of just being upset that we don't share the same perspective, and I think that that would be a good first step. Everybody's angry, everybody's frustrated, um, I hope that reward is coming when our students first step in the building starting Monday, uh, I know I'm excited for it.
Yep, um, just one last comment that I have from public comments. Um, it uh, the ECA um public comment um talked about changing our stance uh within employee situations and and addressing those, and and, you know, it, again, for the record, that that's obviously not accurate. We've been trying to work on that, that's not an easy task, it takes time to address each individual issue that's been brought forth, so it 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 it's not gonna change in our stance, we 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 are as accommodating as we can be in in regards to some of our teacher situations. Uh, and then we're working through it, and and Dr. Zer is, uh, I know he's, he has been inundated with with trying to address and deal with that, and we appreciate all the effort you you've taken to deal with each of those individual situations. That's part of trying to make this all work, is 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 having, you know, our staffing and 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 having circumstances for with some of our staff uh that that has to be addressed, um, and so that's that's why some of this takes time, you gotta work through this. That's why we had to go through, we had to go through the exercise of exploring whether we could go, you know, go fifty percent um this quickly or not, uh, seeing what what's gonna work and what's not, it's 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 not a slam dunk, you just don't force people and tell them, here, no, you, this is your job, you have to do it, yeah, it's their job, but, you know, we have to do it responsibly so that they can uh have a certain comfort level um in regards to being able to teach in a safe environment, so just wanted I wanted to address that comment because I don't I don't think we've changed, the district hasn't changed stance at all in that regard, it's just a process you have to go through to figure out what we, what can be accommodated in and for what reason, so. Um, so, did anybody need to circle back on any other questions or comments, Paul?
So I did have one question in the end after all.
Okay.
Um, Dr. Rowe, with the Thanksgiving holiday coming up, um, do those students just get moved to the next school day that opens up that block of students, whether it's A, B, C, or D?
I I believe so, Mr. Troy. So if 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 we have a, like, if a break interrupts the cycle, like, if we go A, B, and then there's a week off, we would start with C, D.
Okay.
And something else that's important to note, uh, that I'm glad you asked that question, let me think of it, just like the elementary schedule, if we have a um, if we have a uh a week, like, actually, the first week this starts, we have, you know, we're closed on on Tuesday for the election. Um, if if school, if one of those days is interrupted because the school is closed, the Wednesday remote day won't won't happen, it won't be there, and that'll be replaced by an in-person day for students, so that Tuesday, the third, election day, Group A will attend on Monday the second and Wednesday the fourth, and then Group B will come on Thursday and Friday. That remote day is gone, and then once we get to, you know, if, you know, we go to fifty-fifty before the next um, before the next uh off day where we have a Monday off, but at our elementary level, um, it's the same way, if 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 one of our weeks is interrupted uh by a single day, we're prioritizing the students in this day over the remote day.
As long as we don't have a snow day to toss that into the trash either.
But you know, snow days, all of a sudden, are not quite the same burden as they used to be, Mr. Troy.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll take a snow day over this any day of the week.
Thank you.
Do you have anything for, okay, literally?
I do, I'm, I have a couple more questions in the uh, um, Dr. Rowe, can we talk a little bit about uh consistency for I guess the the remote kids, but really the question, um, if we go back to full remote kids, for some reason, uh cases go up, we're having to go full remote as a district, um, would we know what we're going to do with the schedule, especially for the uh K through five uh kids, are we going to go with, are they gonna stay with the schedule that is starting on Monday, or will we revert back to what they would have had this week? Is there anyone to talk about some of that?
Uh, Ms. Mike, that was brought up at the parent meeting that we attended last night, and I gave it to our curriculum department today to investigate, I don't have an answer at this point, but we are working on one, and we'll share it as soon as we have one built.
Okay, great, I just wanted to share that, you know, for the community members that, um, you know, might have a hard-to-answer question as well. Um, last question, the nurse email that was sent out yesterday uh, with regards to if a student needs to be picked up, and then students that, uh siblings at other schools will need to be picked up, will there be communication with the building if um, a sibling is not allowed to come back into the building, how that process should work?
Yes, our nurses um communicate all the time, and so if we have a student who, um, we'll just say, McCabon, um, has symptoms, they have to go, they're gonna reach right on over to the nurse over at um Conley so that they're aware of that, that would all be communicated to the parent when they were picking up the student to let them know, you know, the next steps and when each child could come back, or what that process for each of them to come back with. So absolutely, we will definitely have that that verbal communication in in person to those families.
Please clarify on that, I'm, you know, I just wanted to go through some, you know, I I get, I'm I'm sure the plan is not making anyone necessarily jump for joy, um, we're dipping our toe in. I I learned throughout this process, um, originally, you know, my personal thoughts were, hey, if we wanna kinda have less kids in the building and make this work, then why aren't we just bringing in our special needs students and high kids and kids that are having difficulty engaging or maybe, you know, not getting the best grades, and our kids that are socially emotionally struggling, and why don't we just bring them in? And that was kinda where my mindset was, it was just kind of natural uh thinking, and you brought up a really good point about how important it is that there be, that, you know, they be around, that everybody be around their peers, and that we it it's a well-rounded, well-mixed uh within the classroom, so that was eye-opening for me as to the importance, because, you know, I'm just, you know, as we're all thinking through this, and so it makes sense and, you know, it's a great stepping stone to meet the need um, to the state of the community and having them maybe come in multiple days, you know, a few more days out of the week. Um, but I guess we just need a little bit of patience from everybody as we get through this, so thank you for, um, you know, bringing that to light.
Okay, um, Kevin, you have a, Leslie, anything further? Bill, anything further? I'll take that as a no. Okay, get the mute off, um, okay, yeah, I I I think the, it just piggybacking a little, Melissa, on what you're saying, I think the other the other element that probably administration-wise is I think Scott, you referred it to it as layering in, um, the being special needs on top of what we're doing with this with with the twenty-five percent, it's a lot easier to do that, correct?
That's correct, and and to further emphasize the point, this, the twenty-five percent, like, to having that schedule, that structure, that's completely necessary in order to layer in that additional support for the um for students that are in need, so having that structure uh is is important, otherwise, um, it would kinda be the Wild West of of how we can support small groups, it allows us a a much easier way of so with with uh some organization.
Okay, and I think that, to me, is extremely appealing, and and I, what I would tell you is, you you gotta make sure that we execute and take advantage of it, though, we gotta we actually gotta do it, we can't just say it, we gotta do it, um, and get the, get those kids who are needing more help in there more often, and uh definitely help help out our special needs um population there, um, so that that part of it, I think you can execute it, the word easily isn't a good term, um, more readily, um in this, in this model that's presented, so. All right, so, um, if we have no further questions or discussions uh for administration, um, I'll just put forth, does anybody have any issues with them moving forward with this twenty-five percent model going forward? That that being the direction that they're they're given, so, Bill, are you good with this?
I am.
All right, Leslie, you're shaking your yes, so you must be a yes. Okay. Kevin, you're good with it? Yeah, I'm 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 good with it.
Yes.
I'm good.
I'm good. You're good, all right, so you have the board's full, undivided support to move forward with this twenty-five percent model, um, sixth grade through uh twelfth grade. Just hope that uh, able to, I know you're still dealing with a short timeframe, November, uh, early November's coming quick, so I hope, uh and I know everybody has worked extremely hard up until this point, trying to get through all this to figure out all the different gyrations of all these different plans and the thought, so we really appreciate all the effort, and then I'll I'll lastly, uh, in this regard, um really, really, really appreciate the effort of the teachers so far to date, and I I'm very confident, even though they might not be a hundred percent behind go- going back right now and and would want to do it at the semester, I'm I'm extremely confident that they will do their best, they will try to execute um as best they can, and uh, I, again, it's the hallmark of this district is is our teachers and their innovativeness and and their diligence and their hard work, and you heard it, you heard it in public comments, what they're doing just in this existing model. Um, so we do really appreciate all the time and effort um that goes into it, and I hope having the kids uh into the degree that they'll be in here over the next few weeks between elementary and um, six through twelve will will provide that reward to the, to them also, that having those kids there finally uh uh brings to them and why they're in education, so. Guess we'll leave it, leave it at that, and wish, wish all of us extreme good luck uh moving forward with this and our kids. So item uh five is a closed session, right, we still, Dr. Rowe, we still have a closed session to go into?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion to move into closed session at eight fifty-seven, can I have a roll call, please?
Second.
Second, I'm sorry, sorry, who's the second?
Second.
Mr. Troy is my second, sorry, I'm way, way ahead of myself.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayorino?
Yes.
Mr. Cargliano?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Darren?
When he's off mute, he says yes, um, okay, we uh will be in closed session. We need to move quick, I got one more return I gotta.
Look at that. The presses.
Yes.
Fancy.
Technology's great when it works.
It works.
Okay, we're back in open session. It is 9:43. And Mr. Troy, you can do a roll call?
Yep. Uh, Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Troy, I'm here. Mr. Garin?
Here.
Mr. Pratty?
Here.
Mrs. Melendi?
Here.
This is Meyerino.
Here.
Okay, we're all back in closed session. There are no items to add on from closed session, so I'll make the motion to end the meeting at 9:44. Second from Ms. Melendi. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned.